We are recording.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning zoning meeting here of January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. I'd like to start the meeting by giving the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance in the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you. I'll start by introducing the board members. Start down there.
Ken Barson, Commissioner.
Eric Purdick, Alter.
Jeff DeRosa, Alter.
Mike Kazowski, Acting Chairman.
Diane Ryan.
Doug Keely, Alter. Spur Braden, Commissioner.
Mr. Legard.
And staff that's here.
Amanda Martinez, Reporting Secretary.
Beth Beckman, Director.
Dave McCollum, Nudges Coordinator.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we get going, just want to state into the record that any electronic devices used by any commission members up here are for the sole purpose of reviewing documents located in the Google Drive and not used for communicating. We are going to move the agenda around just slightly to accommodate some of our experts tonight. The first public hearing this evening will be twenty Throwbridge Drive, followed by nine Park Roads. I would like to have Diane read the legal notice into the record, please.
Look here is January third, twenty twenty four, and January tenth, twenty twenty four, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on January twenty twenty five in Meeting Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, at seven PM to hear the following: Vintage and classic for property located at twenty Throwbridge Drive for a site plan. The property can be found in the assessor's records as map twelve, block twenty eight, and lot one fifty dash four. A link to review materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethel-ct.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Paul Shandling, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll invite the applicant to come up and introduce herself and make a public appearance.
For the record, Brian Panico with Paul Simone Survey. He's representing that, Ken, vintage classic. Joined by Robert Maderio, vintage classic, also known as Legacy Overland, Jeff Yanki, a partner of architectural practice. Grab my screen here, see if I can see. So the subject parcel is located at twenty Throwbridge Drive, two point five five acre site in industrial park zone. There's industrial users and detention basin across the street to the west, vacant property in the cul-de-sac, newly cul-de-sac to the south, railroad tracks and Simpock Pond to the east. Currently, the site is forested undeveloped parcel. Site has access to electric, gas, public water, sanitary sewers, all on Throwbridge Drive, which is running north, south, directly to west of the building. Facility would consist of one building, approximately twenty nine thousand seven hundred square feet. A little over half of the building will be used, more or less half the building will be used by Legacy Overland for their vehicle restoration business. Two other tenant spaces are proposed on the north end of the building. Those are here. Each one of those units will have a large overhead door, man door, and then Legacy Overland's front side of the building also has overhead doors and man doors. Their main entrance is going to be located in the southwest corner of the building. Site serviced by public water and sewer while the building is relatively tall. It is only one story slab-on-grade construction. Parking areas are all bordered with landscaping and grass containing shade trees and shrubs. Front of the building and the entire front yard is landscaped. We do have a detention basin in the kind of front yard area, but it's in the parking lot in Throwbridge Drive. That will all be grass as well with landscaping and plantings within it. ADA compliant and electric vehicle parking space requirements are met for the state of Connecticut with two ADA compliant spaces, five EV purging station spaces, one of them a combination ADA and DV. Dumpsters to the site for the site are located to the north of the building. This is a still part of, this whole site is a very large hill currently, so we're basically cutting down that hill to flatten it out and put this building on it. So there will be a large hill kind of on this back corner of the building still. It's about eight feet tall. So we're kind of tucking those dumpsters between that hill and the building and then tucking them back off of the street frontage. There is quite a bit of grading up to that, which you'll see. We have some renderings and some video of what that would look like. So essentially screening and hiding those dumpsters kind of from public view as well as hiding those dumpsters from visitor view. So as you pull in, you still can't see them unless you were to drive all the way to the very end of the building. So we have made some changes to the overall plans that you guys have probably already seen based on the recent comments we've received. Just to highlight some of the major changes that we've made. We have also spoken with the reviewing engineer over at SLR. There were some detention questions and some environmental questions, which I believe at this point we've kind of gotten on the same page. We're on the right path and have kind of come to a design conclusion as to where we're going to go. So we're just going to make those updates and everything on all that as well. So one of the major changes, fire department request, the building is long to head in. So we did design this so that there is a turnaround for fire apparatus. Next page. So this is the kind of overall, the blue is the truck pulling in, backs up into this no parking area and can then pull out and making a K-turn there and exit the site. So that was kind of the biggest change to the actual design of the site itself. Aside from that signage in that area to indicate no parking, additional landscape islands for protection of the parking spaces to the south. We just added one landscape island here around those parking, those parking spaces. And then just additional notes and suggestions for notes on the plans based on health department comments. So with that being said. Sure. Just play the brief. For video for you guys, the rendering of the building. And then I will let Jeff come up and talk. It's not as good as it's going to let me share. So again, you can see kind of the overhead doors, all single story height. Jeff, we'll go into more details about this, but landscape islands as shown on the plans. In the large grass area in the front, this is to the rear of the building. We are proposing concrete all along the back of the building. That's both a fire protection issue and want landscape right up to the building as well as feature for people inside the building to be able to use that to get to a patio on the back corner. And then interior renderings of the kind of showroom restoration area.
Do you have that portion?
Sure. I'm happy to speak. Hi, I'm Jeff Yanki, electric J H N K E, Principal Hartford Architecture Partners in Hartford, Connecticut. So this, we probably, most of you probably already know, this is intended to be a slab-on-grade metal, pre-cut metal building. We're in the preliminary stages of getting into any details of this. Robert shifts in the early stages of speaking with some potential fabricators. So there'll be some, probably some massaging around with the plans a little bit so that we can get some structural work. But I think the plan is based on two other plans that we looked at from prospective fabricators that Robert had spoken with. So I feel pretty confident that it's a, it's a working plan as far as what the building looks like. The glass was, the glass is intended to be curtain wall glass. The doors are standard sized, overhead doors for the application. I think they're twelve by twelve feet high, sixteen wide. Standard sizes for the man doors, typical three oh by six eight or three oh by seven feet or seven eleven, depending on how we, we're trying to line things up so it works with the metal siding. The metal will be either provided by the building fabricator or something that the owner decides to do on his, on his, you know, contract that separately from the shell of the building. The roof is all shed roof pitched to the back and that's to work with. One, we thought it would be good with simplicity of design for the structure, but it also allows us to, Brian actually just confirmed this to me earlier, works with, I think, some of the direction that he's been given by.
SLR.
Okay, yeah, by the design of the site. They're reviewing the plans.
Correct. And basically, the conversation was to try to put, they would like us to put all of the building roof into one of the two detention basins. We originally had to split up. From an infiltration perspective, that would, that mixes kind of the parking lot water with the building roof water. Building roof water is considered to already be cleaned, whereas the parking lot, filter it through a secondary oil water separator before it gets to the basin, provide a little bit of additional environmental protection. So by them, by Jeff pitching the coal roof to the back, we can collect all that roof water in one large pipe from back of the building and discharge it all to the detention basin to the south of the building instead of splitting those up into two separate.
Correct. Yeah, thanks. And then Robert's businesses primarily, as Brian mentioned, would take up these three bays. Right now, they're broken up into bays as base, they're five thousand square feet apiece. It's pretty much what we expect. The structural layout for the, the structural bench for the structure to be in a grid similar to this. And then he has an area to store his cars that are finished on the end. And this is where we have the entrance on the southwest side, as Brian had mentioned. This is towards the back. Basic of, you know, function of meeting room, small upholstery display area, guest bathroom, repair shop area for the restorations, staff amenities, including obviously bathrooms, a break area, and then a prep and finish area. Here, this would be storage, and then these are the, the last two tenant areas. Part of the other plan is to deal with the any water runoff in the garage with floor trough, with trough drains at the doors, and those will go into an oil water separator. Still working on what the size of that will be and what the exact location is. There isn't too much more to say about it other than we're trying to, the bill, the building's twenty feet tall. And that's continual height around it because it'll be a parapet and then the roof slopes down. It's three sides, parapet on the backside slopes down to a gutter. And that's pretty much the design in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions. Before we open it up to other comments, staff, do we have any comments on this?
Um, the only thing I, basically, I just gave you an overview, reminding you that it's based upon a recent regulation, section four point three K five, vintage classic cars. The one thing I did mention to the applicant was the use of trains, interior trains, and I think that was basically addressed within their memo that he received this week, this evening. Also state that they are working with SLR to make revisions for the plans. And I think that you're going to have to table the items until the various revisions have been made accordingly. They're working well together, was basically what I'm telling you. Great. I don't see any obstacles.
Okay. Open it up to other comments. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about the project? Anyone online, David?
I'm not seeing any hand trays at this time, sir.
All right. We'll move on to commission.
Hey, thanks for investing in Bethel. That's a nice improvement. The only question I had is that roof looks like a pretty, pretty good spot for solar.
Good suggestion. So for the record, I'm Robert Maderio, I'm the principal behind the project. First of all, thanks to everybody on the, on the committee this evening. I think it might be a good, good option to look into.
Just a thought.
Yeah. There's some nice economic incentives by the town, by the state to take that investment.
Eric?
I'm good. Thank you.
Jeff?
I don't really have anything other than, it looks like the facade with all the, all the bridges is very much all the same. I don't know if there's any breaking in with that. So it's. I guess, being a Greek dad, I guess we can't really do that.
I'll answer that briefly. I'm a big believer in simplicity and cleanliness of design. And I think from my perspective, when I, so together with Jeff, we came up with this U, is to keep it very simple, very light materials, you know, the facade and let sort of nature kind of speak for it. I mean, with the planting of trees and everything and sort of almost make it less intrusive and so drawing attention to itself that way. That was kind of my.
Yeah, I think there's also a large concern to ensure that the interior spaces, it is ninety feet deep, have ample light coming into them. So that's why there's some, I think, rather large sections of curtain wall that are provided for each bay. And then we also think it's important, particularly in this areas that we know are going to be occupied right away, to have these, you know, light coming in from the backside of the building as well. It's also an opportunity. I've worked on the, the property right next door, which is the old Cannondale building, not too long ago, and familiar with the site and was out there walking with Robert when we first met to discuss the project. And it's, it's a beautiful spot. So I think it's nice, a nice opportunity. And as, as the architect, I appreciate that my client is, is, is interested in these things, too.
Doug?
Doug, Kenny said, thank you for the investment in town. And thank you for the spirit of cooperation, working through the discussion. It's, it's all worked well.
Right. Spur?
Mr. Legard?
Yeah, it looks like a positive investment in the town, a positive plan to make a good project in the park. Thank you.
Great. Two quick comments. You answered one, parapet walls on the side. I'm happy to see that. What fabricators are you, you talked about, pre-engineered metal building, I'm assuming? And are there certain ones you're talking with or?
There's one that's been very helpful. We haven't selected in a while, OK, as yet, because obviously we're waiting for the final sort of conclusion on the site plan and dimensions and everything finalized. But there's a company called Eco Steel.
Okay.
Out West, or you have another mistake there? And they were selected. I went, I mean, I've talked to dozens of companies from China.
Sure.
But they have done really nice projects in the past. And what's very important for me, so this is not just like the big box that sort of gets put in. I mean, for us, we built old and big old machines and we wanted this space to go that. And they understood what we wanted in terms of paneling and sort of the architectural design with the windows. So they are the front runners at this point. And with, with an approval, we'll go ahead and start the award season with them once Jeff finalizes all the details.
Yeah, I understand. It's like you mentioned, Jeff, early on, it's, once you figure out the fabricator, I was just looking at your comments spacing, and I know this is nothing new plans on it, but keep in mind that fifty-five is a little long for pre-engineers. One last comment, to kind of echo a little bit what Diane was saying, is I, I think it's a beautifully clean looking building. I'm wondering, and, and you guys have probably gone through different iterations. It looks so nice and clean, and then you've got these big white doors. Is there a way we can kind of tone those down a little bit, maybe kind of, yeah, work with the siding?
Yep.
You know, I love what you did with the simplicity of it, but then you see these big white sectional doors. So something to think about.
I, I, I think that's a great, great comment.
Absolutely. I think that'll help with what Diane's kind of thinking of, just a row of kind of consistent overhead doors. And then it'll really focus on the, the glass that you guys are, you know, highlighting a little bit. But those are my comments. And going with what Beth said, it sounds like we have some work to do to address some comments. So for that reason, we're going to continue this hearing to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is January twenty eighth, twenty twenty ninth. Thank you.
All right.
David is checking online.
I'm not seeing Attorney Andrus online yet, Beth.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I would suggest that you go to business.
Okay. Um, as we just wait for one of our town consultants, experts to join for the next few public hearings, we're just going to jump to our business meeting really quick to take care of some housekeeping thing, and then we'll get right back to it. So I appreciate you guys' patience. For the business meeting, I'm going to sit Doug for Kitty. I'm going to sit Jeff for Paul Shandling. Did everyone have a chance to review the meeting minutes of twelve ten point five four? Is everyone, anyone have any comments?
Motion to approve.
All right. A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All close. And I will abstain. Second item on the agenda for business meeting is invoices. We have a invoice from the News Times for an amount of seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I get a motion.
Motion, we pay the News Times seven hundred and thirty-eight.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. All opposed? All right.
Your business.
Okay, can move on to new business. This will be a special permit for pool house, pool house in front yard at twenty-seven Hoyt Road. I'm going to ask a scheduled public hearing for the meeting on February eleventh, twenty twenty five. Does that need a vote? All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, sorry. Can someone please make a motion to add twenty-seven Hoyt Road to the February eleventh agenda?
Make a motion to move twenty-seven Hoyt Road to February eleventh.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? All right. Good. Going through this, Beth?
Yes. Excuse me one minute. I'll see if I can reach counsel and see what his status is. If his status isn't, in the next five minutes, we'll move on to that. Well, not that. Wondered that. It don't happen very well. Better my standby than.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else we could do?
All the housekeeping things.
I don't think I've ever seen a commission with a lack of things to do in forty years.
We got plenty of things to do. How to get, get to.
Well, all the timings.
Timing, that's it.
David, are you on the call? David? David, is it imperative that?
Unfortunately, I'm accused from nine.
Is it imperative for Attorney Andrus to be present during the beginning of this hearing or, or whatever?
He, he had advised that the commission not continue the public hearing on, on that application until he was present.
You advise the commission or you?
Me to advise the commission.
Okay. All right. Very good. Then unfortunately, we're going to start the next public hearing because it's seven thirty and we do have a large audience in attendance in regards to that. And I apologize for any of the experts that are waiting online. But unfortunately, we're going to, I have a commission of volunteers here, and we're not getting paid for their services this evening. I also have a large room full of residents that live within the town of Bethel, and I think it's important to meet the needs of the, of the parties involved here.
All righty. Amanda, do you have the?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to a new public hearing for one oh five Milwaukee Ave. I'll have Diane read the legal notice.
To appear January third, twenty twenty four, and January tenth, twenty twenty four, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on January fourteenth, twenty twenty five, in Meeting Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, at seven PM to hear the following: Kevin Cleary for property located at one oh five Milwaukee Avenue for a site plan consisting of an eight dash thirty G, twelve units. The property can be found in the assessor's records as map forty, block forty-six, and lot thirty. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethel-ct.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Paul Shandling.
Thank you, Diane. Before we start with the applicant's presentation tonight, I just want to review how we typically conduct things, meetings here for anyone new. The applicant will present. We'll then have staff comment. Then the public will be invited to come up and speak. When you do come up, please state your name and your address, and we also will include any members of the public that are online. The applicant will then address your questions and/or comments. And if time allows, there'll be another round of revolting. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And with that, I will invite Mr. Trinkus and Mr. Mark.
We'll hear from him for moral support. I'm doing the presentation.
All right. So Steve Trinkus, for the record, professional engineer with office in Southbury, Connecticut, representing Kevin Cleary. Beth, do you pull up the plans? David, can you pull up the plans for, for this application?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Trinkus, I will, I will request that you let me know what you're pointing to on the monitor so I can follow with my cursor.
Okay. Well, I think, yeah, I'll tell you which sheets we're going to start with some when you get them up. You can go to the second page or beyond the title page, David. So, and then I guess share the screen.
Can we enlarge it so everybody?
Yeah, because it's pretty small.
Dave, I'm sorry.
I mean, if you also, David, if you wanted to turn it ninety degrees, you know, it will fill the screen better if that helps.
If, if I had the ability to do that with how I'm sharing this file, Mr. Trinkus, I would, but I do not.
Okay. This site is located at one oh five Milwaukee Avenue, which is
Okay, um, this site is located at one oh five Milwaukee Avenue, which is also known as Route three oh two. It is just west of the intersection with Putnam Park Road. Um, there is an existing single family house. Uh, located along the western property area, pretty much where these two units are shown. Uh, Beth had had discussion with Mr. Cleary back, I think, late October, November. About potentially either turning proposed units that we have here or potentially keeping the house. Uh, Kevin talked to a contractor about uh keeping the house, and that's what we opted to do. So it's an eleven unit plan, not twelve, because we basically dropped one unit. Um, there's an existing four bedroom apartment in the front of the house. Uh, there's a garage. Um, with this space above it, so we're just gonna make a one bedroom unit. We're above the garage and close the garage off and make that a kitchen living area. So the house is gonna stay as is. The front porch is gonna stay as is facing uh Milwaukee Avenue. Um, if you could scroll up, David, to go to the bottom of the site plan. So we can see the other units. So there'll be two other buildings, one with six units along the western property line. And a three unit building uh in the southeast corner with the driveway coming in in between. Um, there is nineteen spaces proposed. Um, there will be a retaining wall to the west of the existing building. Um, uh, because of the slope going up that way. Uh, one of the thoughts we had was using the back wall of the structure as a retaining wall. But that would eliminate windows on the first floor. So kind of be, I hate to say it, dark. So we opted to put a retaining wall in. Um, one of Todd's comments uh was a detail of this, and uh what we're gonna do is, and I put it in um. The revised plans. Uh, if you go to the next sheet, David, I think the site grading plan perhaps. Okay, this is utility plan. This is, we're gonna bring sewer and water in uh from Milwaukee Avenue to the site. Um, it's already served by sewer and water. You can go to the next sheet, David. Okay, yeah, stop right here, David. Actually, or go back up a little bit. Of course. So on Route three oh two and Putnam Park Road, there is no storm drainage, believe it or not, on the state road. The only catch basin is on the uh intersection. Of the road that goes uh down to the high school and the school complex on the far corner, and it is completely silted in. So there's no drainage at all. So what we've done is we've designed an underground detention system to address water quality and uh zero increase up through the hundred year storm, which is. The new requirement in Bethel. And then because of the grades on the site, um, I'm actually pumping the storm water up to the front yard in front of the house. Where we'll have a deep gravel bed and then a concrete level spreader. There will be some infiltration that will occur here, although we did not account for that. But we're providing the zero increase and runoff. So the runoff on the uh three oh two, which currently exists, is gonna still continue at that rate or less. Uh, you could scroll down a little more, David, to get to the lower end. Okay, uh, actually back up a little bit. So the underground detention system is here on the east side. It has a hatched road. This is what's called the isolator road. This is a. Uh, with Poltech Systems or Storm Tech. These are the plastic igloos that we use for storm water. The isolator row is wrapped in filter fabric. And there's a manhole on the upper end of it where the flow rate associated with the water quality volume is directed into the isolator row. There is a bypass pipe that storms larger than that, then go around and go into the rest of the gallery system. Um, there is an outlet structure on the southern end of this system, and then it goes into this pump chamber. That will have a originally was a two inch line. We made it a six inch line because it actually reduces the friction within the line. And we'll pump that up to that stone trench um out in the front. Um, you know, all the roof drains will be connected. Uh, there's only one pair of catch basins here uh off of the page here on the driveway. Um, so the roof drains and all the parking lot goes into those catch basins and will go through the treatment system. Um, this hatch area is gonna be PVC pavers with grass. So it's a green area, but it will allow the fire truck to come in and turn around. So um, you know, instead of having a a large paved area um as far as that goes. Um, I think you can go to the next sheet, David, if you would. Yeah, keep going down. I want to see the detail. Yeah, thank you, right there. So in the lower left of this sheet, you know, here's a foundation wall. Here's the retaining wall. So at the bottom of the footing, which is roughly four foot below grade, we're gonna have a footing come across. They'll all be tied with rebar. And then the retaining wall uh going up vertically. This will be a cantilevered wall and the wall will be supported by this wall being tied to the foundation. Of the structure. This will have to be designed uh by a structural engineer. It will be four feet below grade, so you'll also have the weight of the soil pushing down on it. And what that does is it prevents what we call the overturning movement of the wall because. You've got a structure like this where the weight of the soil above is gonna wanna do this, except this holds it up. It doesn't let it bend uh down. We also showed a chain link fence, which was suggested by Todd um on top of the wall. Um, there's also a curtain drain at the base of the wall. Uh, so we don't get any water collecting behind this, and that curtain drain is also uh connected to the storm water management system. Um, these units are basically the same footprint that was used uh by Mr. Draper on Good Hill Road. They're uh, you know, two story, two bedroom units. So the first floor is livable space. The second floor um is the two bedrooms. We provided uh the architectural plans. Um, you know, we have a landscape plan. Um, you know, I had all comments. I just wanna kind of go. You know, through that. He asked about the driveway. Maybe you could scroll up, David, to the top where the driveway is. Um, the driveway is not at ninety degrees through the road, but it doesn't have to be either. Um, it comes out actually about twelve degrees off ninety degrees. One side is a hundred and two, the other is seventy eight. Um, as far as that goes. Uh, Todd asked if we put a stop bar and stop sign, which we did. Um, he asked for a lighting plan, except we don't have any pole lighting. We only have bollards um along the walkways to the unit, so photometric plan is not required. Uh, he asked of a new park, uh, no parking sign be placed where that hatched area is for the fire uh. Turning area and the fire department also asked for a no parking sign, so that's been added to the plan. Um, there are no ADA units here, so we have no ADA parking. Um, ADA is not required under eight dash thirty G unless you have twenty units or more. So at eleven units, you know, we're less than that. Um, I removed the curb in front of the dumpster, so the concrete pad will be flushed to the edge of the pavement. Um, so there'll be no problem rolling the dumpster out. Um, he had a question about the slopes. These are all two to one slopes, which are perfectly stable. Uh, he cites the erosion guidelines, saying that they should be three to one. Um, ever since I started getting into development in the late seventies, we've done two to one slopes along roads and everywhere else, and we've never had an issue with them. They are very stable. Steeper than two to one can be problematic. Uh, you also do not need erosion control blankets on a two to one slope. Um, we, he had a question of contours at the south end of the site, which I had uh corrected on this plan. We added the cross section of that that wall along with a fence. Um, again, you know, he asked about, you know, detaining the water that's below the catch basins. Well, all of the driveway right now goes all the way out to Milwaukee and. There is no drainage out there, and there's quite honestly no way to collect it. But again, per the regulations. We provide a zero increase by overdetaining the water from above to let the lower section of the driveway uh go out. Um, he had a question on the hydrologic model of the outlet pipe from the control structure going into what is the pump chamber in this case. Um, that it it can be called out as what we call a primary discharge or device one, and then your other. Orifice controlling structures reference that. It doesn't affect the model whether you put that in there or not. I've done it both ways. It has no effect on the model. So it's an engineering uh preference, basically. Um, as far as that goes. Uh, the the what we call the weir in the outlet construction uh outlet control structure is a concrete wall. It's a four inch wall. He asked that that be modeled as a a sharp pressed weir. A sharp pressed weir is like a piece of steel plate that's a quarter inch. That's sharp pressed. Anything with a dimension is what we call a broad pressed weir, so that will stay in the model. Um, you know, we changed the pump sizes and again the force main uh to have the flow. Again, with these hydrologic models. You know, you have an instantaneous peak flow. That only lasts a few minutes. And basically, these pumps, you know, will run three to four minutes. You know, if we had a ten year storm as an example, but it also flies kind of contrary to rainfall records where eighty five percent of our storms. Are one inch or less in twenty four hours based on actual data. So the system will be fine. And these are dual alternating pumps where. One pump clicks on now, the second pump goes the next cycle. If one pump is struggling, the second pump automatically clicks on where you double the pumping capacity. Um, I had a uh a company uh look at this that does pumping systems for sanitary sewer, and they said it's fine for this use. Um, as far as that goes. Uh, we changed the pipe slope from the pipe slope from being zero to half a percent. Um, I added the remainder of the post development boundary that does not go to the detention system um on the plan. Uh, there were a few elevation adjustments I made on the plan at Todd's request. Uh, he then cited section. Six thirteen E one C of the zoning regs that states. All drainage conveying systems, whether structural or nonstructural, should be analyzed, designed, and constructed to accommodate upstream. Offsite runoff and developed onsite runoff post development. Um, he was asking that we do hydraulic grade line gutter flow analysis. That's not what the regulation says. What I added in the storm water report is the pump, the pipe capacities. That we have on the site that are gravity flow, their full flow capacities, they're well higher than our actual flow rates for a twenty five year storm. Um, there's no need to do the hydraulic grade line or the gutter flow analysis at all. Um, it's also not required uh to provide the channel protection volume in this case. And again, as I pointed out, there's no drainage on this road at all. I was really shocked when I walked in because. The only catch you could see was across the street by the police station, and when I walked over there, the sand was right up to the to the rim. So all this water either runs, well, this water, I think, runs towards the intersection and continues down three or two where there are catch basins. Um, and west of us actually runs back uh towards town. Um, I changed, uh, I had a typo of the Caltech unit, so that was corrected, and there was another correction about um. Uh, two sketch basins that came from another report. Um, I also had done an infiltrate, couple infiltration tests out here. Um, not knowing the depth of the system. Uh, Todd said, you know, correctly, they were shallower, so you know, I went back out on the tenth. And I did one deeper um down uh where the bottom of the system is, and actually got a slightly higher rate than the other ones. Uh, maybe because the soils are perhaps a little drier now, but we're only using a a rate that is uh twenty percent. We observed five inches per hour in the other pits, and this, we're using one inch per hour, so it's a very conservative design. The D E P manual. Uh, recommends using fifty percent, so I could have used two and a half inches, but I'm using one inch to just be very conservative in the design. Um, I did not have a chance to review other comments. We have some comments from health and uh public utilities and the fire department. And we will address those in written form, which obviously will probably be continuing going forward. So you do have the architectural plan, so you know, in the file.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marcus.
I think that's uh basically. That's a review of the proposals that's before you. Uh, and again, I uh just wanna iterate that uh Beth and I did meet earlier on. When this project was uh the application, and we talked about trying to retain the existing house, retaining the streetscape. I guess we both talked together about that. I think it's a good result.
Well, it seemed to be a little bit of miscommunication because Mr. Trinkus clearly stated that he was not gonna be doing it. In a letter he sent to me saying.
Let me correct that for record. I said I wasn't gonna do it. Until Kevin, until we got in front of the commission. I wasn't gonna preemptively drop a unit, but after Kevin talked to a contractor. And found that it was economically feasible for him to do it, then he decided, he said, let's do that. So I was. Thank you.
Neil and I.
I thank you, the department for coming up with this suggestion. That I think is uh is well adopted into the plan. Which is not, as you know, a very desperate G required because there's a lot of a lot of leeway into what you can do. But uh, I think that that's an important feature to keep in mind. The other uh issues that addressing health and fire, we will do, obviously, as Steve said. So at this point, we will listen to the questions from the commissioner of the public concerning it. Thank you.
Okay, before we get to the public comments, I'm gonna ask uh Beth and staff to, if you'd like to add to this application.
Yeah, I have a few items to just bring up. Um. To go over with as I go forward with this. Um, there's been a lot of discussion. We've had a lot of interest from the general public. Regards to eight thirty T and what is it, how it comes about, where it's at, and where it comes from. So I'm just gonna take a few minutes and read my memo that I put together. Um, Amanda, you have their package. You could send them out to them. Um, I've never had to do this before, but I think it's incumbent on. The uh commission and the general public to be aware of how eight thirty works and how it's involved within the town of Bethel. Um, so as far as staff is concerned, meaning myself. I've worked with various different organizations located without the state. I work with the Partnership for Strong Communities in DeSegregated Connecticut. At the request of State Representative Ellie Brennan and staff, the Commissioner of Housing came to Bethel in twenty twenty for a roundtable discussion on affordable housing and the effects of climate downfall, positive and negative. At the request of the State Commissioner of Housing, Cillian Mascaro Bruno, I was appointed to the Department of Housing's Plan and Process Board Commission. Working with a variety of stakeholders to help towns understand the process involved with developments of this nature. In nineteen eighty three, before the institution of eight thirty G statute, the Planning and Zoning Commission, of which I was a member. Working with the Nolan family, created twenty five affordable units that remain so to this day at five main tree. And under the auspices of the Bethel Housing Authority. Over the last twenty years, fifteen eight thirty G projects have been completed. And forty one ADUs, or what we call accessory apartments, have been built under the guidelines of eight thirty G. Since twenty sixteen, there's been implementation of numerous zoning regulations requiring an affordable component located in almost every residential zone. There are presently two eight thirty applications that are either filed or served with the court. Uh, the town presently has an affordable housing trust fund, which is being used for administrative purposes. And promotion to maintaining existing affordable housing. The crest, a request is being made tonight. For funds to investigate a property for potential elderly housing similar to Reynolds Ridge. Eight thirty G is a state law produced by the state legislature. And amended by the state legislation. Our state representatives and state senators are the ones that have created the laws governing affordable houses. The law basically says in the most basic ways for you to understand as residents in the town. That the zoning regulations do not apply, do not apply, or in other words, throw them out the window. Based in the attached copy, of which I'm gonna have Amanda give you, a copy of the criteria for the commission's decision. That is the statute itself pertaining to um, uh, what is it, one A. Um. This uh, please note that after working for the town these past twenty four years, State Representative Brennan is the only member of the House that has contact. For information pertaining to potential bills that could affect Bethel and amendments to this state statute. I thanked, I always thank him for his advocacy. Bethel presently has five plus percent of dwelling units, five percent. They says you have to have ten percent. We have over five and a half percent at this point. On Bethel is presently in the final phase of applying for a mortgage, which would give us the fifth round of four year reprieve from accepting this type of application. The total number of residential units that the state's affordable housing percentage is based on presently is the twenty twenty census. This holds until twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty three. Twenty thirty is complete, not as if you put in fifty units. Oh, my God, the the percentage goes up. There's a standard number that was created in twenty twenty and that holds for ten years. I read a lot of the social media. I'm trying to educate you and provide you with information that will help you. If you wish to see changes in the law, our staff will pass around a list of our state representatives. Please contact them. Or if you need further explanation, please feel free to contact your office in regards to the state statute eight thirty three. I hope this is helpful for you before we begin this tonight's public hearings, and Amanda is handing out that information. Okay, so in regards to tonight's public hearing, Beth has just a few comments uh because we do have a heavy agenda this evening and. I will have to say that I'm a little just. Begin. Starting with. Uh, the first attachment you have to your report, and again, this will all be in the drive for the next meeting. We'll put it in for a while. I apologize. We've been working on this. Forever. And to me, it's minutia. Number one. We have a listing of certified mails that Mr. Trinkus has sent to. Number one, we have a listing of certified mails that Mr. Trinkus has sent to uh, everyone within a hundred feet. In regards to that, Steve was did good. He sent us the certification form. I received an email today from a property owner. Again, it's property owners that these letters go to. It doesn't go to tenants or rental units and people of that nature. Property owner is located at one oh two Milwaukee Avenue. I'll read it into the record. My property owner across the street from one oh five Milwaukee Avenue, he found out today, I did not receive a certified notice of today's meeting. I am requesting a postponement, so I will be able to attend the meeting and speak if I choose. This is a, it sounds, I'm not gonna say, I'm gonna say it. Sound like an older gentleman. He's not computer savvy. They told me he could come on Zoom and watch it. It was very difficult. Took a couple of times for him to send this message. Okay, so that's number one. So obviously, we are gonna be continuing the hearings, but I just wanna note for the record and recognize the gentleman that he tried to make arrangements, put in a ten. Number two is, as usual with any eight thirty G application, we try to give you an amended form dealing with our affordable housing report. It gives you a status of completion that we've done with other accounts. Number three. I, I'll try to be as quick as I can, but this is really, to me, it's getting into the weeds. I had an email from Laura Vassil and I'm not gonna read them. You can read them at your own convenience. I'll just give you a summary of the email. Um, saying that the health department received a blow email from a P and C commission's applicants engineer. It appears this engineer is, is not familiar with Bethel's longstanding commission reviews for healthy community, development, living, so on and so forth. Can you please let us know how to proceed? The email that was sent was uh, from Steve Trinkas dated twelve four twenty-four. Hey, and the site is served by sewer and water, so there is nothing for health to look at. As I previously stated, Laura, the health department has no jurisdiction over the sites or location of a dumpster pad, so there's absolutely nothing for health to look at. No fee is being submitted. Catch that by response to Laura, I've, and it stated whatever Wednesday the fourth, you can review this in your own thing. I basically say, believe this experience is near, engineers done a lot of work. It's Beth, Bethel has forgotten standard procedure concerning the health of them being a proposed residential developments. I use examples of previous applications that he has completed and submitted. Um, serviced by sewer and water consistently objectively reviewed by your department at the request of P and C along with the being a design engineer. The question review has not changed. Don't understand Steve's refusal to pay. I'm out of the office. That was one of it. All right, so to me, this is basically the notion. The reason I say that is that if you look in the Google Drive, the health director has found it important to justify her job and the price, and her job in respect to you as the commission. Her reports are sent to you as the commission. All the department reports are sent to the commission. Okay? For forty years, I will state that the health, health department has always been part of the process in review for the planning and zoning commission. To refuse a review or to re, to go into this world of a ten by twelve dumpster pad with fencing in concrete. The expense that it creates for your client, the expense in time and effort it is creating instead of dealing with the facts of the matter is ridiculous. Number two, going from there, I just wanna put into the record one other item which stands out. One thing I need to clarify, taken on from council is in regards to Mr. Trinkus's report that he submitted in regards to item number five. There are no ADA units. ADA, there's a minimum or minimum of twenty units in regards to this. Okay, I will submit attached to that. You'll see a um, under the building code, the requirements in regards to ADA. And this is an email from Chris Baldwin, the building official for the town of Bethel. He talks about ADA in regards to this uh, site plan. And you can go through the laws in the building codes that are cited. Um, and the, and thankfully, there is a small conclusion at the end. The amount of units of C ten and type of units would be required as per required R three twenty point three of the state's only code. Going from there. And if, and along those lines, handicap parking would be required. And going back to a minor go to the site plan, go to the intersection with Milwaukee Avenue and Judd Avenue. If you go to the site plan, you'll see that Mr. Trinkus was good. Uh, accommodating, he put in a stop bar and a stop sign and tried to be a little bit preemptive of whatever comments he was gonna be, he'll be making. In regards to this, I checked with Eric Swenson, who is a professional traffic operational engineer. And he said that uh, having a stop bar eight feet from a stop sign, stop sign is not what you do. The snap sign goes where the stop bar is located along those lines. In regards to Mr. Trinkus's comments, dealing with the trees adjacent to the property line, I believe it's item ten that there's gonna be minor disturbance. I know Mr. Trinkus is, is always reminding our commission that he has a degree in forestry. Um, we, I had a meeting with the tree warden. Again, we will get it in writing, so we put it in the record like everything else. Um, stating the fact that he has concerns about the location of the retaining wall and the effect on the adjoining properties, trees. Mr. Tree Warden is a certified licensed arborist with the state of Connecticut. So after I, uh, this is just getting into what I feel um, professionally, we should not have. We should just be able to have an application, review the application. Oh, there's one other thing, and I bring it up because there's a lot of residents here. Dealing with the driveway. You look at um, the site plan. You look at um, a lot of the test holes, the test pits and things of that nature that, that are done. You'll notice, I know, have a little bit of knowledge, but I, you'll notice that there's, the soils are good presently. The soils, the soils do good draining presently. I request that you look at the location where the dr, uh, dr, uh, food, I'm tired, guys. I've been working on this for a little bit today. Uh, where the catch basins are to the, to where the roadway is. It's basically twenty-four by a hundred feet. So it works out so mostly, I was putting it into to have it an increase of impervious surface, number one, not being treated, not draining directly into Milwaukee Avenue. Now I am gonna be requesting that you all do a sidewalk too. I think the neighbors are the, the best ones to attest to the fact, the amount of um, ice. Unfortunately, when I was out there, I was going to make a turn. The whole area on the corner is loaded with ice. So obviously, water's coming from somewhere, so it continues down. I'm cutting the whole road. I was, I was shocked to see the amount of ice. That was when we had the real bad cold snap. So I request if any of the neighbors can attest to those items, I would truly be thankful for that. Lastly, I'll leave you with, you have eleven two-bedroom units. You have the feasibility of having twenty-two, you, you figure, you know, two-bedroom units are prized possession here in town. You have the feasibility that you got two kids per unit. So you're talking about twenty-two kids
Yes.
On the um, on the property. So safety becomes a major issue. Again, if any of the residents know how the bus will factor in things like that, I'd be very interested in that. You notice there is a crosswalk at the intersection of Milwaukee and Judd, Route three oh two. Um, safety is an issue because of the size of the development, because of the proposal, that is before the commission. And I do, and I strongly feel that it's not the town of Bethel's safety issue, Mr. Marcus. I feel it's incumbent upon the applicant to work, to deal with those particular items. The town of Bethel has worked with safety issues pertaining to that intersection by the creation of a sidewalk connection from Judd Avenue leading to downtown Bethel. It is incumbent upon the applicant to deal with sidewalks getting to that crosswalk in order for children to safely go to school. Because we have to look at the fact there are twenty, possibility of twenty-two children living on the side.
We have a proposal sidewalk, but we'll make it so we're aware of it.
Again, you had what, Neil?
We'll have, we'll have a proposal to deal with the request for sidewalk.
Neil, you know how I offer.
I don't say how I offer.
I don't, I, I do not like extending, continuing, going on forever and ever. I'm done with that. Excuse me, I'm speaking. And I, we're, we're done with that. Let's be precise to the point and get to the point quicker. Especially dealing, I, I am done with the dumpster routine. And I follow the routine because it's a struggle every time. Let's just do it once, do it right. And again, the cost, I think there are people in this room can tell you what the cost is to your applicant.
We know what the cost is with all due respect.
And I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to be honest here and say, look, it affects the residents and it affects you. So let's work together, Neil. We work together. Okay, so let's continue. That's all I have for the moment. I do request that you do have a sidewalk to go over these sidewalks. I think that's very important during the All right.
Uh, before we get to commission comments and the applicant responding, I would like to invite any members from the public. Um, if you have any question or comments, please come up here so we can, uh, folks online can see you and please say your name and add.
Hi, please.
Hello.
I'm Eleon. Eleon, I um, I suggest that you do your sidewalk um, from between any time three five to six man to experience the traffic that is on three oh two and Route fifty-eight. And the ice on Putnam Park. Um, recently, there's new construction, a house going up. And it has increased to half of the roadway. It's horrible. So as far as what's on three oh two, um, Mr. Trinkus had said that um, the water flow from that property is going either into town or to Judd. There's no way that it's going into town because that's uphill.
I said the property west of it. I said the road west of us.
Just, let's, let's just keep it one sided for now.
Either way, I don't know what the um, drainage is on three oh two. Um, but I'm interested in knowing um, the square footage that these units will take up on, I believe it's point seven, is it? It's less than an acre?
You have to talk to the board.
We're perfectly willing to answer these questions. We need your permission.
Yes, um, we can let her finish and then we can, we can answer the question.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Let's, let's let all the public talk first. I, I, I apologize. It's your first time doing this.
Please continue.
You got a long night ahead of you.
I just wanted to know what's at the property.
So that, that kinda goes back to what Beth was saying about with thirty G. And, and there is regulations typically in the town that you have to keep them to a certain size for acreage, but with eight thirty G looking, you, you can fit those.
Are you, she's talking about it affecting the drainage taking up.
True.
Right? Is that what you're?
That, yes. There's a big concern. Especially with the flooding that we've had.
Understood. All right, anyone else? Hi, welcome. Yeah.
Uh, Jana Wilshaw to Putnam Park Road, and so right next to the property. Um, thank you for bringing up the children. That was our main concern. Um, will there be a, a cap on occupancy in those units? And if so, my first thought was we could have two dozen children on one property. Um, I appreciate her saying to do the walkthrough at that time of day. I agree, traffic is very heavy. But I'm also an educator, and so I leave at six forty-five in the morning to, I would assume probably nine AM, right, when the other schools are coming and traffic is equally as heavy at that time. Um, very concerned about how two dozen children on a main road in a heavily trafficked area would get to school. The current tenant made a comment to my husband about the bus telling her that it was an unsafe place to stop. I don't know, my child is too young right now to go on the bus. Um, but I would encourage us to look into that with the bus company. Um, if children are walking. Again, will there be a sidewalk there? Selfishly, will two dozen children, they'll be on our property? Are we held liable for that? What does that look like? Um, also, I'm very nervous. It's a no right on red. Many, many people ignore that. Twice in the past six months, my husband, my daughter and I have almost been hit um, by vehicles who had a right on red, were turning right. We had a walk symbol and we're in the middle of the crosswalk. Um, daylight, it was like two o'clock in the afternoon. Um, if that can happen to us, that makes me incredibly nervous for other children. Um, would there be an increased police presence at the morning times and the afternoon times to accommodate all of these kids? Um, that's, that was our, our kinda main question and also nineteen parking spots. Um, again, who monitors that? Because if you have units of multiple adults, are we really assuming they only have one or two cars? Um, does that impact if emergency vehicles can get in and out of the complex? Um, yeah, those are mine. And then this is kind of a question that might not be for you guys. Um, but our taxes obviously went up recently because property values went up. Um, if there's a potential that property values go down, um, due to us, would the town be reevaluating, reassessing our taxes and kind of what that timeline would be? Um, and then trees, I know it was the other property that um, they initially had concerns about, but we would like to know if um, what trees on our side of the property would be affected. Um, because we, we wouldn't wanna lose them either. And that's it.
Thank you.
Do you want to say your name again? I'm sorry, that's it.
Jana Wilshaw.
Please go.
Yeah, J A N A. W I L S H A W.
Anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Alan Ackowitz, uh, Zen Button Forest Road. Uh, talking about the icing and the drainage, there's a storm drain that's right at the end of my driveway. And we've been dealing with the state about the runoff that's coming from the properties and causing a nice uh, situation at my driveway down past the post office or the mailbox and coming from Milwaukee three oh two, which is Route fifty-eight also. The water that flows down, it doesn't go anywhere until it goes past my driveway into the storm drain. There's not another storm drain available to take all this additional water. And uh, you're talking about changing the landscape. So we're gonna be getting more water, more damage, and then they're gonna be coming down on the people that have waters coming down the driveway out into the street. And then the icing occurs and it's a very hazardous situation because when you get up to Route three oh two and fifty-eight Milwaukee, where the traffic light is. If you're heading north on fifty-eight to traffic light, that light will stay green for the length of about three cars to go through. There is no left turn signal. There's no, uh, well, right if nobody's coming, but there's no left protection going towards town or towards going to three oh two. So you're talking all these cars in one oh five adding to that. It, it's gonna be a nightmare the way that's gonna be designed. But the water issue has to be addressed because I'm tired of getting hassled by the state because the water runs down my yard and freezes out in front. And then the neighbors and the neighbors and the neighbors, all that work comes down and that freezes too. So they gotta do something with the. So they got to do something with the drainage, the storm drain, whatever they got to do, but it's right now it's a nightmare the way it is. And when things start getting constructed, it's going to go downhill rapidly over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virgin Rainberry, seventy eighth week drive. I have a concern with same thing everybody else have a concern with, that's the water runoff. And when you put a new structure up, it's gonna, it's not going to improve. It's going to make it worse than it is. So my question is on this retaining wall that he's going to make on the west side of this site. How far is that retaining wall from the structure? That's number one. Okay. So the next concern is if you go across with your three oh two from the structure, it's a drain that he said was sand or chloro. Thought up. Why can't we fix it? Is it the state road or whatever? That might alleviate some of the problems. But either way, the retaining wall coming toward my property, which is toward Midway Drive, the short drive. It has to be controlled. Now, the way he says he's going to control it is put these drain lines in with some pumps. Pump water someplace. Someplace. That's not going to work. It has to go someplace. And as the other uh people said, messing up your driveway, getting ice, you're getting that and that soap. Fix the drainage system so that these things don't happen because putting in a new structure is not going to make it better. It's going to make it worse. If you don't do something properly. He blew through that thing on the drain pipe, by the way. You know, the thing was far enough that, you know, across the street, he didn't even go to that issue. You know, as to consideration, but he did say we're going to pump pump the water someplace. As long as we have electricity. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cost me something too.
Sure.
We'll feel your hand, Barry. I reiterate what my father just said. I'm also concerned about the structure of the land, the trees, and how tearing some of those trees down on that property of one oh three um, that leads to the back of our house at seven A is really going to disrupt disrupt the drainage even further. Because the trees help sustain the foundation. And we already have issues with water coming in from that area, one oh five down short drive and the drains right off of that one's hard possibly one oh seven. So the trees are an issue that should, they should be taken down. And there are some trees obviously have to be taken down to build. So um, and I won't reiterate the water, but the water is a huge issue. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here in the public? Let's speak.
Um, Joe, I was calling up for my wife. No, I'm putting the record on uh on the website. I looked at the town notes and the uh the lieutenant or the commissioner of the police department had wrote down that he was concerned about safety. That's what I wanted to know. Um, I went down to Bethel Police Station because I've lived on that corner now since two thousand eighteen. Every year there's a major accident. It's a terrible road. I've got the report. There've been ten accidents since two thousand eighteen. I don't know accuracy because two years of that, you know, COVID, less cars on the road, but everyone is going back to work now. So there's going to be more people on the road. Um, you know, if with the school buses, I know, you know, kids have to be picked up on that road. If the school bus stops there on that corner, that's going to be a major backlog coming down three oh two because they're going to have to wait and then cars will come around that corner. Or they're going to do stop at the intersection because they're going to see, they're going to see the school bus there with the stop. So they're going to be waiting in the middle, which is going to cause more blockage, potentially more accidents. That's want to make them, they want to wear that, you know, the police are also concerned about safety on this corner. Um, I know you mentioned there's a building a sidewalk on the the lightest cell on my property. And it isn't my property. There'll be the sidewalk would have to go on to to get to it. I don't know what the rules are. We're building sidewalks on other people's properties. So I don't know. I wouldn't know what that is with the town. I don't have any rights in there. So I just want to make everyone aware. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the room here? Have any comments? Oh, David, any, anyone have their hand raised on online?
I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, we'll go to commission comments here. Any?
Yeah, a couple things to say. Uh, we're really hamstrung by the state rule. Uh, pretty much you can put these affordable just about anywhere. So it becomes a real battle and this clearly has some safety issues there with the traffic. Um, this, this is beginning to look like a long battle. So hang in there.
Eric?
Um, obviously some concerns about uh water drainage. Um, Trinkus, could you talk to me? Because I don't, I don't get it. Pump system, one more time. You just have a question about kind of if there's one pump that's always engaged or if that is only in the event of, you know, significant wrinkle or how that works.
Steve Trinks.
Yeah, can we just, we'll go through the comments. Yeah, I, okay, just keep it going that way for now.
I got it. We'll get back.
I'm sure there might be some duplicates. I I hear, I saw you. You're on top of everything.
And I guess just the, just the follow up to that is um, is one of those pumps sufficient should one fail?
Good. Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I have the same questions as Eric. Pump system, just figured explaining in layman's terms. Um, and also the retaining wall along the backs of the property. Uh, I saw your, your little inset on how the dimensions, four feet from the building. On the plan, it looks like it's about two feet from the property line. So, so how do they build that without disturbing other people's property? Um, and 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 then also the trees over there are a big concern. Um, who else? I I see it, and you know, I don't live in the area. I know the intersection. I can't imagine trying to take a left out of there between three and six o'clock and I don't think we'd ever be able to get out of that driveway. Um, so, uh, and then lastly, uh, does a uh C T D O T have anything to say about this? Do we need to put the permitting from them?
They will.
To do to
They will later.
Any project of that fronts on the state road, they get involved?
Right.
I'm concerned about the crashes from the general. Um, also, you know, where are they supposed to play in this particular proposal? Um, and all the drainage issues that everybody has and and whether the state or the town or how do we deal with that? And there are a lot of accidents in town and um people drive fast. So I'm just concerned um that you would need a crossing guard that was there all the time during the school time and um who pays for that?
Doug? Well, clearly we're hamstrung on just about everything except for safety and there's, there's safety concerns here. So I think uh you know, that would, that would be something that's of interest to me, especially if the police department's saying something about uh, I think the traffic study's going to help us with it. I have no, no other comments about the buildings and stuff.
Bro.
I have a couple of comments. Uh, I would imagine the part of the design of the main pump and the backup pump, you will also include a U T S. Uh, second comment pertains to uh, the gray area, and I don't mean gray in the terms of using, I mean in terms of shaded here on the snow storage area. Um, if that intended to be snow removal for the entire draw. And then my last question, going back to this area where you have the retaining wall and the foundation wall. Whatever the dimension is, is is that something that's anticipated that is going to be cleared of snow and ice? Or is the snow and ice accumulating there? Those are my three points at this time.
Thanks, Doug. Uh, Mr. Agard?
Uh, one, once again, it looks like we have a lot of work to do or the developer has a lot of work to do on getting this uh thing to the point where it it meets even the minimum of regulations in some instances. And on top of that, uh, I think we're, we're in the same situation where we come down to our experts don't agree with their experts. Uh, and we need the cooperation to where we can have a compromise.
Thank you. I have a question. Maybe Neil can help answer. Just to throw this in the pile, not for tonight, but the next time. You know, with A thirty G, you're dealing with experts, experts, this expert, that expert, so on and so forth. Um, you know, safety, it appears that safety is going to be a concern to the residents and the commission and so on and so forth. Well, i- in in regards to the town of Bethel, um, you know, I I know what the, I know what the answer is going to be. The answer is going to be, oh, well, DOT is going to look at it after it's approved. Well, DOT is the expert, the state of Connecticut. This is the state of Connecticut statute. So therefore I think it it entitles us to request the applicant to review this with DOT prior to a decision is made by this commission in order to ensure that the safety issues have been addressed. So think about that, Neil.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. It might alleviate some of the concerns ahead of time.
Think about it.
It's just, you don't have to get back to us on that right away, but.
But I'm throwing that.
Attorney, I can.
I'm asking Attorney Marcus.
The state actually has a protocol.
Yes, they do.
It's the order in which they won't, literally, they won't waste their time reviewing a proposal that hasn't been approved by the town. Because then we may never get approved by the town or may get changed. Exactly. So they, they're very, you know, particular about their process.
I, I appreciate it because I. I don't agree with you, Neil. I think that you should make the effort and make the approach and see where you, where you align with that.
I will, I will contact permits, but my experience, Steve Trinks, with DOT is exactly what Attorney Marcus said. But I will talk to Tomason, which has jurisdiction here, and if I can meet with them and get a bird's eye view, I'm happy to. They may not, they may say no, but I'm happy to ask.
It, I appreciate that and uh, it's a little backwards because, you know, they could come in and say, the thing we already approved, they're going to go ahead and change it. So I.
But again, it's their state laws, their rules and regulations. You understand what I'm saying.
I got caught years ago in an argument between the Danbury Planning Commission and the state DOT where neither side wanted to give in out of the way they thought it should. The, the, the Route six, Shertley Town Road uh driveways should, permits should be given. And it was a disaster. We finally resolved it.
But again, it helps your, it helps, it helps you as the, your applicant. It helps your property owner. Let's try to resolve these issues now. You know, instead of spending all this time and money on this part, your part and our part.
We're with it. We, we go.
Two things, two real quick things, and then I'll let you guys, obviously responding, have a lot to respond to. Uh, generator for the pumps, um, you get, yeah, are you including it? If not, please do. Um, and then as far as affordable and housing goes, A thirty G, I don't know if there's a way to do it, but have you looked into maybe doing age restricted fifty-five miller or something like that? I think that could alleviate a lot of safety issues, something to think about. Um, I'll let you.
Steve.
Organize.
I was just going to go through some of the commission.
Are you, okay, commission first.
So the, the pump system has what we call dual, Steve Trinks, dual actuated pump. There's two pumps in a pump chamber. Um, they're wired by the electrician that pump one clicks on the first time it has to work.
When does it have to work?
Well, there's.
Once the infiltrator's filled up.
Yeah, no, when the flow comes out of the table. The, the pumps click on when there's a, there's two, there's float switches within the pump chamber. So if the water rises in the pump, it hits a certain point, the pump clicks on. When it, you know, pumps that volume down, it then, you know, shuts off.
Mr. Trinkus, may I ask what sheet you are uh showing to Mr. Broadbent?
Number nine, David.
Thank you.
So there's a twelve inch drawdown. So the pumps are set on concrete block. So we always have a little bit of water in the pump chamber. When the pump, when the water comes from this detention system into the pump chamber and it starts filling up pump chamber where it gets twelve inches above the pump uh uh pad, the pump clicks on, pumps the water out. It drops back down. Uh, the off switch is obviously at the bottom. Um, above the on switch, six inches higher is an alarm. The alarm is wired uh to one of the units where it's a very loud, nasty buzzing alarm. So that tells you if there's an issue with the pump so that somebody can come out here and fix it. Um, so the alternating pumps, one pump does this cycle. The second time it has to click on, the second pump does it. So you don't wear them out. However, they're wired that in the event that the first pump can't keep up with the flow, and that's why we've increased the, the size of the pumps. The second one automatically clicks on. There's a single line that comes out of this. So all the water goes in here. There is a backup generator for this. So if you, we lose power, which occasionally occurs, you know, this will work. Now, you know, it's during a rainstorm, you know, it works. You know, it's the, we lose power because of the snow event, a snow event where there's no water, then obviously, you know, the pumps aren't going to have to run. So there is that backup power. Um, you know, we will look at, you know, moving the catch basins down the road and moving the detention system down, I should say, down the driveway to catch more of it. I don't know how feasible it is. You know, I, you know, pumping water is not a desirable situation. I was shocked when I walked out Rio two in the intersection that there there, there were drains on a state road. I, it was, you know, they're always all over the place, quite honestly. And in this intersection, there, there's none. And the neighbors are right on Putnam Park, there's very few. And so you get quite a ways down.
To ten.
Yep. For the right of, the, the silted drain that you witnessed, that's on state road? It, it's right of course, whether that's a town road or uh the state has jurisdiction, I, it's the right of way, there are, it's a conflict. I don't know who has jurisdiction over it. We can check with DPW. Maybe they're willing being here because getting DOT to clean out a catch basin is like an act of God. So maybe we can prevail on DPW to clean it out and we can see where the water goes.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to speak to them tomorrow about it because that's.
All right. You mean it's, it's, I mean, the surveyors couldn't get the evidence because it was completely full of sand as far as that goes. Um, you know, we'll look at the retaining wall. I can tell you that, you know, trees that are above the wall and on the adjacent property, when we have trees and flow sparks in me, we do not necessarily dig out with an excavator. You use what's called an air soil remover where they're blowing compressed air and they vacuum the soil out. So you actually don't cut the roots. And this wall, because from the foundation coming over is concrete, this wall can also be concrete. So all you need is a ten inch form to run it up because you pour against the soil line and then that's it. So, but we'll look at some other options there uh prior to the next hearing. Um, the police commission did recommend potentially maybe no left turn. We're open to that. We can design an island in the driveway which forces you to go to the traffic light. Um, I will say I actually have, the times I've been on the site, I have a harder time making a right turn than making a left out of there. But, you know, maybe it's the time, the time of day that I'm there. Um, you know, we'll look at, you know, again, traffic issues. I mean, ten accidents in, you know, six years since eighteen is not very many, quite honestly, at that intersection. Um, I grew up in Reading. I know these intersections extremely well. And, you know, I do think they should have a left turn from Putnam Park coming into town. That would, you know, be nice. But again, that's a DOT. And generally turning lanes with them are an act of God again. They, they don't really relate to the fixing problems that they have, um, especially drainage. Um, you know, regarding the sidewalk of ingrained into this down on Cindy Lane, if the town brings a sidewalk up. If the town brings a sidewalk up to our site, we'll put it across our site. I think we can easily do a crosswalk from our driveway across to the sidewalk, uh, on the north side of three oh two. That would be easy. Um, in affordable, and I will check with other clients that have done these for, but normally we do not find kids in the affordable or market rate units, but I'll check with the ones that we've done and get back to you on that. So, you know, we'll address the other comments. Like I said, I have, you know, health, police and fire memos, which I just downloaded today. So we'll provide, you know, written response to them. You know, the dumpster issue, you know, is a, I won't say a pet peeve, but health departments in Connecticut can only enforce what is in the Connecticut Public Health Code. The state is allocated to the towns. They've developed a health code. That's what the sanitarians enforce. There is nothing in the state health code about dumpster pads at all. And it's an eight, we've done eight by ten in many projects. We have never had an issue with them. There's no industry standard that it has to be ten by twelve. But the point, you know, to my memo to health is they don't have jurisdiction over the dumpster pad. I have talked to other sanitarians. I've talked to Matt Pollack at the state and everybody has confirmed they have no jurisdiction over that. And many of the sanitarians have said, why would I want to have jurisdiction over it? That's my point. I have no problem with departments reviewing things that are in their jurisdiction. But the dumpster pad is not in the health department's jurisdiction because it's not in the health code. That's where it comes from. That's the bottom line regarding the dumpster. And we've gone through this on every application I've done. And, you know, there's no need, there's no industry standard. I mean, Mr. Draper on other projects has talked to, um, I think it's Oak Ridge up there on White Street. And they have said, there's no standard and we can work with an eight by ten, especially on these smaller projects. There's not that much. So we'll address the other comments, you know, in written form unless Mr. Marcus has a few he'd like to address.
Again, enough to beat a dead horse on the dumpsters. But actually, I do planning and zoning in lots of towns in the area. I actually, in town council, a lot of towns here, and this is never an issue, the size of the dumpster. And one of the things I, I took off myself was to go to my clients who actually are in the garbage industry and ask them about the size of the dumpster. They're kind, interesting. They actually have the, the reverse position in what apparently the health department has. They say, you don't want to oversize your dumpster containment area because you encourage people to leave stuff in there and then we get there and we can't move the dumpsters in and out. He said, we like to have the space that's designed for our dumpsters, period. And you know what? I thought about it. It made a lot of sense. So we, you know, I don't know what the theory is of the ten by twelve dumpster in crook area from the health department's point of view. I don't know why they chose that, but I do know why we don't do it and why the industry that we deal with doesn't think it makes a lot of sense. And even, it, way that is.
Can I just, let's put it to bed with this conversation tonight, Neil, and then we go. Can I just say, it's basically, can I just say, thirty five years, the health director of this town, who is the expert representing the town of Bethel, has been, has had to deal with rodent infestations, all the things associated with bad sanitation practices, okay? This is their standard. You have an application in front of you. You call it a residential application. It's eleven apartments, eleven two bedroom apartment. You're in a single family zone, right? You're in a single family zone. Well, guess what? What is the major concern for the adjacent property owners? Where's all the garbage going to go? It's very simple. So what you, we do is you create a standard. This is a standard and it's used on every single application. It is not differentiated between, oh, well, we like him or we like him. It's based on rats and dumpsters and inappropriate garbage handling by people that live on the premises that are not owners, but are tenants.
Somebody will put.
We'll put it to bed before you leave, okay? Neil, right of regulating, okay? That's the only way it's going to end. Thirty five years of experience and it, and, and the sanitation in this town has improved. And I will say that and it's on, it's in regards to the health departments. Due diligence, dealing with dumpsters in Texas. That's all we got. So we put this to bed right now.
Hopefully, we, we discuss.
And just do what it says.
But the, the, okay, so the.
Do what it says. Go ahead. Keep going.
The other issue is apparent in a lot of the comments tonight from the public. I'm not going to go through each and every comment because some of them, I think Steve's already addressed in the, the drainage plan and the pumping system. But, uh, a couple of things that were said by the public which are important. Um, and one is that, uh, deals with the icing condition. It actually, that's talking about the.
Yes, and so did Steve.
Early on, when, in the first affordable housing location I made in the town of Richfield sometime in the late nineteen. I, uh, town of Richfield had a problem that the six units in that process were going to be located on Ivy Hill Road in Richfield, which is a narrow, windy road. And a hundred or fifty people came out and complained about Ivy Bridge Road. Judge, uh, uh, the case went up on appeal and the Judge Marshall Berger, who was probably the leading land use judge, recently retired from land use court, wrote an opinion on that issue. He said that was a health and safety issue. It was traffic on Ivy Hill Road. And he said, there was evidence before the commission from all the people who testified that there was a problem with Ivy Hill Road. The Board of Selectment has the obligation of dealing with the safety of Ivy Bridge Road. The applicant in his proposal didn't create that condition. A hundred and fifty people said it's there right now. So if the burden then shifts, he actually threw that issue out. Similarly, here, if you've got a noticeable icing condition that's dangerous, it's a real problem for the town of Bethel, not for Kevin Cleary. The town has to fix this. First of all, once you're on notice to all this, if I'm the guy who slips and has an accident in my car on that corner, I'm going to say, I'll sue the town. Maybe about.
State road.
Okay. If it's a state road, I'll have to sue the state.
Right.
But the fact of the matter is, you've got to take it up. If, if, if the condition is all on the state road and not on the town, then it has to go to DOT. Kevin Cleary. That's, but, but, and the public ought to realize that, that the applicant doesn't create these problems. He, we have to live with them too. But the fact of the matter is that somebody has to address them to, to, to deal with them. So if it's a state highway, I, I couldn't quite figure out where this icing condition was. But again, one of the residents up on, on Midway who testified, talked about, excuse me, not on Midway, it was one of the residents on Putnam Park Road about having water coming down his own driveway into Route fifty eight. And, uh, and he's got a problem with that. Well, the fact of the matter is the problem is on his own driveway and, you know, and Kevin Cleary doesn't have to deal with that quite honestly. Those, that's, that's money for the public. I don't dispel that there are issues there. And by the way, I, I go through that intersection on Route fifty eight and three oh two, five or 10 times a week. I, that's, and I notice all the issues and, and the right on red. Yeah, and people ignore that, you know, people come up behind me in the morning because I don't ignore it and they kind of tap their horn. You know, the road, the road's empty. Why am I turning right on this red? And, and I kind of refuse to do it.
You don't turn right on red?
Not when it says prohibited.
I'm, I'm afraid now to go down the road because I'm taking, I never turn right on red at intersections.
But it's, but these issues are, you know, these are not, these are important issues that are not quite related to the application that is, is before you. So, uh, the, and Ken, your comment is absolutely correct. If you think that the state statute is a problem, look at the legislative agenda in Hartford for the term that opened this past week. I mean, housing affordability in this state is a crisis. And to think that it's, that this situation is going to get any better for the local communities? No, it's not. And by the way, and by the way, affordability of housing, the fire in Los Angeles has just created literally a firestorm in the housing industry. We'll be paying for that housing cost for the next 10 years. For what, over 10 years? So these are issues. I, I agree with you, but, you know, we got what we got. We got the handle we're dealt. We'll come up with, with responses to your comments. Uh, but at the end of the day, I think we can address them. The only last topic I've got to look at or talk about is schoolchildren. And years ago, long before eight dash thirty G, the city of Danbury was giving me a hard time on a multifamily project. So school children, school children, more school children. So I actually went to the Board of Education and I'm going to encourage you guys to do that too. And I got all of the multifamily developments in Danbury, all the, you know, garden apartments, everything that was approved and had significant housing. And I asked for the school bus coordinator to tell me how many children they pick up at each site. Can we determine based on that actual study that there are really very few school aged children living in multifamily houses in the city of Danbury? We could look at what goes on in Bethel too. This is, this is an issue that we can deal with from the Board of Ed.
And I, I would say to the, to the Board of Ed, um, there was an enrollment study done recently, which I just shared with the commission. Um, they finished it in December of this past year.
How did you on that issue?
On the enrollment study?
Uh, yeah.
I'll give, I'll send it to you and you can take a look at it in regards to the enrollment study.
There's a reality.
In, in dealing with that, no matter you have twenty two two bedroom or eleven, twenty, you know, you have two bedroom units. You can't say that we should not be concerned with children and the safety of the children going back and report to school because the odds are, let's face it, if you're going to follow the rules under the Fair Housing Act, you will have the opportunity of kids being able to live there. So we have to address it, Neil.
But I just wanted to blow it out of proportion to say that there are going to be twenty two school children living here. So it's a likelihood that there'll probably not be a census of one, two or three based on statistics, but we'll look at that.
You could look at that. Um, go back to when you're talking about the drainage just for a moment.
Yeah.
And, and in regards to this property, I think you might have missed the point that I was trying to make. And that was that this property, because of the activity that's taking place on the property, despite what's going on around the corner, down the street as far as ice and drainage, there is going to be an increase in impervious service, surface. And that increase is going to be at least two thousand square feet just based on the driveway itself. As Mr. Trinkus says, and I, and I just want to verify that, that he's going to look at that.
We'll make sure that.
Because it's an increase. It's not like we, we understand, you know, what you do, you do because you're trying to, they're trying to accommodate all the extra impervious surface. But this is the one area where I have concerns about safety. And that is pertaining to what's, you know, you're, you're doing an increase. Where's it going to go? I have concerns of existing conditions within the area.
They said, we will look into that. It may not be feasible on the site. But right now we have the buildings and the driveway parking areas, um, all of that increase you know, above the catch basins is going into the detention system. The lower portion of the site is being allowed to just continue draining as it does. And at, uh, three oh two, we have zero increase in runoff from the two to a hundred year storm, which is the town of Bethel standard. Um, you know, I would love to put the catch basins on the bottom of the driveway, but I have no place for the stormwater management. That's what we'll look.
Looking at that.
We'll look if I can push it downhill. Know if I can, but we'll happy to look at.
Maybe, and just for the record too, let's just square away as far as the, um, DOT and such, I, I, I'm trying. And I'm sorry I've been doing this so long, I forgot. I'll come up with it. But there is an allowance for, you can ask them for a cursory, cursory, cursory review. You don't have to go to permit. You know what I'm talking about, Steve.
On a project in the, in Walker that I just did, DOT flat out told me they wouldn't look at it until I have my local.
Well, if you need a memo for most of it.
I'm happy to, I talked to a guy from Thomason yesterday on those things. I'm happy to reach out to them and see if I can sit down for a half an hour. If somewhat, the older guys, they, you know, well, one or two are slightly retired or passed away. They would.
I know.
Meet with you. The younger guys do not. They sit in their office all the day.
Okay.
So, but I'm happy to reach out.
The other thing I think you should consider too, I mean, you have heard comments from the commission, from the residents, Steve himself said it was hard to make a left turn out of there. I think, I, I can't recall off the top of my head what lieutenant.
You should just know what turn.
But that's fine, but I think we need a traffic engineer. And we're going to, I'm requesting that, uh, you, you obtain the services of a traffic engineer to look at the entrance and exits, the sightlines and things of that nature pertaining to the site. I think we had enough discussion here this evening with concerns about that intersection. And I do believe that the applicant should provide us with the, uh, traffic.
He provided the data. Mr. Thury's brother actually worked for DOT and he looked at the traffic. She may not be a P E, but he worked in DOT and traffic.
Okay.
So Kevin's unfortunately, um, his mother's got health issues. That's why he might hear this tonight, but I spoke with him earlier.
Hear that.
So, but, so we will be addressing that.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay.
One other question I just wanted to ask, um, the existing house that you have, you have tenants, they have tenants in there now?
Yes.
Are you planning on keeping those tenants there during the school construction?
Yeah, they live in the four bedroom apartment currently. So there'd be, you know, I, I don't believe Kevin has any plans to throw anybody out. That apartment's going to stay as is. We're just going to take the area where the garage is and upstairs and make it a one bedroom apartment.
Sidewalk.
Yep.
Dates, times, weekends during the meeting. During the week it starts, six thirty in the morning.
We can do better.
Three o'clock in the afternoon. That's, that's what it's for asking. Um, weekends are better?
For me, it's personal.
Okay.
Me too.
Up to you. All right. Who didn't, what's the preference? Weekday, weekend?
Big weekday guy. Weekday?
Yes.
Three P M. Get the track.
What's everybody's schedule as far as early afternoon, three thirty? Four o'clock?
If that works for everybody during the week, I can make that a little bit work.
Tuesdays, Wednesdays or Thursdays? All right. I'll send you an email tomorrow, produce some dates.
Thank you.
And I'll try to do it as late as, please keep an eye on when the sun sets. Should I walk back?
Make sure it's raining that day.
All right. So you'll email that?
I'll email. I'll let the applicant know and see what we can put together in regards to that.
Okay. Uh, this public hearing will be continued, not at the next regular scheduled meeting, but on two eleven, February eleventh, two thousand. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, we have a continuation of a public hearing. Uh, Tim Draper's A thirty D Affordable Housing, six units at nine Putnam Park Road. Might the applicant come up? Uh, Steph and Doug Tenny are recusing themselves for this portion of the meeting. Thank you. Steve Prinkus, professional engineer, then. Uh, David, will you pull up the most recent plans for nine Putnam?
I think go to the next page, David. I'll go one more, please. Yeah. Uh, if you could zoom in, can you make that a little larger, David, or not? And then just slide it down a little bit.
I know.
Okay, that's good right there, David. Thank you.
Uh, Steve Trinkus, this is a modification from the denial of the original eight dash thirty G, which I'll let Mitch Marcus weigh in on.
Yeah.
These plans were submitted, uh, at the meeting right before Thanksgiving. Um, you know, to be fully designed, given you a concept plan before, because we wanted some thoughts whether the idea was acceptable. So this, this plan set which we submitted at that time, you know, has all the grading, all the set, they call the stormwater management. Um, you know, we got some comments from January third from Todd from SLR. Um, and I provided a response. Uh, some of the, uh, questions were the, on the drainage, uh, all the elevation to the drainage system, and I apologize, in the viewport in AutoCAD, which is basically a window, uh, on the drainage plan, I didn't extend it over enough to, to show that data. So now on the drainage plan, that data is all shown. Uh, we also showed the roof and, and footing drains at Todd's request, the roof drains go to the catch basins. The footing drain, uh, go daylight. Uh, can you go to the next plan, David? Yeah, whoops, uh, actually. Looking for the grading plan. Maybe that's, maybe it's the next one, Neil, on that. Yeah, right here, David. If you could zoom in on this one. So, um, So, um, we also had, what we call it in engineering language, graded drain swale uphill of the units. Um, and Todd asked, did we show grading behind the units? And so I did that. We'll also have the full uh, graded swale, which is just grading on the landscape. And I put a yard drain in to collect the water at a low point. And we discharge it on the north side of, of the building and it'll follow the contours and head generally east. Um, you know, during the prior application, there was an off-site wetland area two properties over on Milwaukee Avenue. This is the limit of the hundred-foot upwind review, so we have no activities within that. Um, so the driveway is coming in the southern portion of the site, making a turn to the north and then another turn to the east. The buildings will be connected. We have three units, a connection which is storage and three units. Originally it was four and then two, which required two separate septic systems. So in this case, it's one septic system with a septic tank and pump chamber. Um, we have full erosion control plan. Um, you know, Todd had reasonable comments. We made, you know, all those changes. Again, he commented on the driveway not being ninety degrees, but there is not a, uh, requirement for it to be ninety degrees. Actually, town roads generally can go between seventy-five uh, degrees, twenty-five feet off, uh, ninety, um, as far as that goes. Um, you know, they're already, Todd asked about a curve along Putnam Park Road. There actually is a curve there. It may not be in the best shape, but there is a curve along our side of Putnam Park Road. Um, all driveways, it's standard practice from contracts, as you have an inch and a half paved lip. So your driveway is higher than the gutter line of the road, so the gutter water on the road doesn't go down your driveway. Um, that's a construction issue and that's just how the driveways, uh, get built. Uh, we added, uh, we had all the soil testing for the current septic system, which is in the northwest corner of the site. And we added the original testing, which was in the northeast corner of the site, uh, as far as that goes. Um, and again, we provided in the stormwater report, the capacity of all the drainage pipes and our, our design flow rates are well less than, you know, what the capacity of these pipes are. Uh, so they'll easily, uh, handle it. Um, so at this point, I'll, I'll let Mr. Marcus, uh, you know, talk. But that's the plan. We also submitted yesterday, uh, revised architectural statement. Could you pull that up if you have it?
Which sheet would you like me to go to, Mr. Trinkus?
Good question. Uh, let's start with the top one, David. I really want, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess if you could, uh, no way, okay, we can't turn it, but, um, that looks like that's the, uh, the lower ones. Maybe the next page, David. I'm kind of looking for the, I'm looking for the, the front from the park. Yeah, well, this is the floor plan, so this, these are the three units. Uh, going towards, that are more or less parallel Putnam Park Road. This is the connector of a storage area and this is the other three units. They're all similar, they're all one-bedroom, they're exact, the floor plans are exactly what we had before. Basically just connected, you know, uh, at that point. Could, uh, try the next one, David? To see the elevation drawings of this, of you. Okay, one more, I guess. Or maybe that one. Okay, yeah, I think that's, yeah. Okay, yeah, so this shows, this is the two-story connector here. Um, you know, so it's just going to connect the buildings. It's going to be a storage area seven foot wide at the angle of the two buildings, but basically the floor plans are the same, so are the backside of the building. So the only thing that changed was really that view on the driveway side. So.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Marcus at this point. Get full of the record, Mr. Marcus, the applicant. Uh, I think that Steve has addressed the design concerns that were raised in the, uh, Ritchie report, so hopefully that puts to bed those issues. So the main issue that seems to be the obstacle to bringing this thing to a conclusion is that we received a report today from the Bethel Health Department on day of January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing and quite honestly, you're probably used to our professional engineer talking about septics, but I realized that we have a difference of opinion between a licensed professional engineer who has many years of experience and the health, the director of the Health Department, who has the, the office that has to be addressed, it has to involve you. So we, we've cut to a sort of a, a logjam. And in the page two of the report from Bethel Health Department, there's a paragraph, there are numbered paragraphs, one through twelve, but you get down beyond paragraph twelve on page two, it says, uh, you know, design modifications were made to the sewage disposal plans to demonstrate code compliance. Now, again, this commission has to determine whether there's suitability of soils to put in septic systems on this site. You don't get to approve the plan for septic. Health Department does that. And quite honestly, if there's ultimately dispute with the local Health Department, the state Health Department can, can determine whether there's a suitability, whether the plan can be designed. The only thing here is you've got to determine suitability. And so this is what worries me. The next sentence goes on to say, site suitability for the proposed sewage disposal system has not been demonstrated. That's a real problem. We have two areas on this site that we believe meet the state health code for suitability. And we've appealed the denial of the first system. That was way back when, when the first system was denied, it was, uh, the health, it was a health issue raised by the commission that septic would not be available on the site. It wasn't suitable. So we've done this whole redesign, we've come up with a lot of new testing and we come up with a septic system area which we think is suitable. If the Health Department, the director says it's not. Which leads me to believe that we have a site in Bethel on Putnam Park Road, which is unique to Bethel, because quite honestly, been involved in a lot of development in Bethel over the years, and I've never seen a site that doesn't have suitability for septic. It does. That, the, it's, it's the first one in my book. If that's the case, there's a huge problem. Not only for my client, but for all the people along Putnam Park Road, the soils are not all that different. You get a lot of old systems there and over the years, as these things start to fail, you determine that soils aren't suitable. That's a real problem. One is, it's going to force the town to extend the sewer system. We've already been to the Public Utilities Control, asking if they're interested in doing it. Quite honestly, we didn't get a very positive response. Because if they were interested in extending the sewer, we would have brought it out to nine Putnam Park and we wouldn't have this debate. But they were too interested, so we're stuck with septic. But if the site really is not suitable, as it says in this report, that's a huge problem, not only to say for my client, but the, it's, it's an issue from town. Now, my proposal to this commission is that you put in condition of approval on the plan that requires us to get a septic permit from either the town of Bethel or the state of Connecticut. Because we can't, no matter what you do, if you approve this site, we can't build it unless we can, I, uh, one, get a septic system in, or two, get the sewer extended. So your condition of approval is just common sense. You're going to say, well, this site meets all of our other issues. The traffic works out, it's a nice looking building, you've got, uh, proper drainage and everything else. We've addressed the, the inland wetlands issue of the couple of square feet that, that were filled in from the old swimming pool. We've addressed everything, but I don't think, the reason I'm addressing you is I don't think anybody in this commission is any more qualified than I am. We're all laymen to determine the suitability of the soils on this site. I will tell you, I have read the regs, I've read the reports. And if I were the judge of the Superior Court, to determine the suitability based upon plan and what the regulations say, and a judge could determine that, we have an appeal on that issue. But my preference is that the director in Hartford, at the Health Department, that is, be the one who arbitrates this issue. It determines and advises the applicant whether or not the site is suitable for septic. Because as I say, if it's not, we've got to go a different direction, back on the sewer commission. But for the purposes of bringing it close to this hearing and a close to this application, I'm going to suggest that a condition of approval be that the applicant, before an early permit is issued, get a septic plant approved, which the applicant has to do anyway. Or the alternative, provide public sewer to the site. That's a little different. If we can't do that at this point, as I say, ultimately, we're going to spend a lot of money on both sides. Because I have an appeal pending. And my appeal is based on the fact now that I think we proved that the soils meet the state requirements. And we're going to ask the Superior Court Judge to make that ruling. It's a lot more efficient, a lot less expensive for both parties if we defer that to the state Health Department. So, you know, I have a lot of respect for Laura Vassil. I understand that she has her concerns and her advisors. And they, she said soils not suitable, which I have trouble accepting, but I respect. Steve Trinkus, on the other hand, I've done an enormous amount of work with. He has been the expert on these issues for a lot of the towns that I've represented. He's the guy who actually advises, particularly in Brookfield, it's some of the town. He advises their planning and zoning commission really well, especially on these same issues. And he's, I've seen him write papers on the issue. I've seen him go travel and give, uh, speeches in undeveloped countries on sanitary, uh, sewage disposals. Uh, the, so I've got a lot, a lot of respect for his position, but at this point, it's untenable to ask this group here to make this decision. I'm going to ask you to send it up to the state. And the state that I'd like to see is to try the Department of Health before we continue before the Superior Court, where we're already pending. So we're not going to argue tonight with the findings or the conclusions that Laura has. We've seen him. Uh, she's seen, and you've seen Steve's conclusion, uh, and I've seen his observations. We have Jim McBaddes's, uh, opinion on soil pipes. But at this point, uh, we're at a logjam. And so we're prepared to close the hearing and ask you to consider an approval with a condition that's just practical. We got to go get a septic, uh, permit or a sewer connection, one or the other. So at this point, if the applicant is going to rest, uh, material that's been submitted, we're not going to present anything further, although Steve has any second thoughts. No, we think we've got, the one other thing I, having said that, I've got in my hand here a report. It's, it's a report. It's a one paragraph, uh, letter, I submit a couple of copies. And this is from a company called Waste Engineering Inc. Uh, and, uh, a guy named Wayne Ver, Verit. And Waste Engineering Inc. is the exclusive distributor of the green leach filters, which is a patented, basically waste treatment plant, uh, the, uh, waste treatment, uh, design. And he has addressed one issue in Laura Vassil's report. It has, it has to do with the contours in row two of the, um, of the system as proposed, in a sign or E sign drawdown. So you now have a, a, a third opinion on the septic system, which doesn't do you much good, because it only puts you back in the same places. This is a little bit beyond the scope of our training and it really is, but it's in the record for, for what it's worth. Uh, and I think it's worth a lot, quite honestly, but I don't expect that it changes my position or your position. The best way to deal with this is to finish your review of this proposal, send the issue of the septic to the state where it belongs. And as I say, otherwise it ends up in the hands of the Superior Court Judge, who may or may not be core qualified, but I'd prefer to have it for our Health Department. So we thank you for all the time you've given to considering the application.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm going to pass it over staff, but, uh, David, would you like to comment?
Uh, yes, I would, Mr. Kostavski. Thank you, and I will be brief. Uh, most of my comments are just going to be reminders, save my first one, which is just a reintroduction uh, for the commission. Uh, all of your town experts are in attendance tonight. That is Laura Vassil, Director of Public Health, uh, uh, consultant for the, uh, uh, Health Department, Chris Palowski of Civil One, uh, Todd Ritchie. Uh, this commission's engineering consultant with S L R International Corporation. And Attorney Charles Andrus of Barth Clegg Damon, he is, uh, the commission's, uh, land use counsel. Um, you, I believe Amanda has, uh, distributed the, uh, Health Department comments uh, that were received by this office this afternoon. Um, as Attorney Marcus, uh, uh, stated during his comments, they were provided to the applicant. They were also provided to all of the town experts. Uh, they will be added to the Google Drive for future reference. I did not have the time to get those in time to those, uh, before the meeting started tonight. Um, while we're on that topic, we have digital copies of all the documents that have been submitted to date. Uh, we do not have, uh, hard copies of the architectural renderings that were shown on the screen. Uh, the commission should, uh, consider requesting the applicant, uh, submit those. Um, either before they, they render a decision or perhaps as, uh, a, a condition of, of approval. But either way, um, they are important because they may be needed by, uh, the commission's counsel in preparing a turn, a return of record, uh, in the instance that the applicant either appeals, uh, this decision, uh, that the commission would make for this, uh, modification or follows through uh, with the appeal that they, uh, previously submitted for your previous decision. Um, my last reminder comes, comes in the form of, um, time sensitivity. The applicant has consented to, uh, this, uh, uh, commission's review, uh, only until January thirtieth. You have tonight's, uh, in terms of regular meetings, you have tonight's regular meeting and one more regular meeting on January twenty-eighth, uh, two Tuesdays from now. Um, not that I would, uh, suggest, uh, the commission, uh, taking away from, um, another special meeting that, that you have already scheduled uh, for, uh, to discuss the Parking Mobility Study and, uh, TOD. Uh, but you do have that scheduled for, I believe it is two Thursdays from now, January twenty-third. It, it, it may, in the interest of convenience for you all and for staff, um, it, it, it may be best for you to facilitate, uh, discussing, uh, this application, should the commission close the public hearing for this tonight during that special meeting, before you go into that discussion. Uh, that helps, uh, staff, mainly myself and Attorney Andrus, uh, prepare the draft decision for the commission's review. Uh, it would be a, I, it, it would be a disservice to you a, a, and to, uh, staff to try to do that uh, with, uh, consideration to the hour tonight. And, um, you know, tr- trying to cram all of that discussion and draft language uh, into what otherwise would be your last meeting on, on the twenty-eighth. So, um, any questions that you have, uh, pertaining to my comments, I'm happy to answer. Any questions that you have, uh, for your experts, I recommend you ask them tonight. Um, so that way, uh, you can have, uh, an opportunity for discussion. And that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Um, I will open it up to public for any comments about the application. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, Sally O. Eight Putnam.
Hi, Sally O'Keefe, Department of. Um, I understand that the septic went from two down to one. And I'm curious as to what the capacity is for that. Um, I understand that we had the discussion previously with the eight thirty G. That there's no specification as to how many people can be housed in these one bedroom units. Um, so that's my concern that. I'd like to know the size of it and, uh, capacity of persons for the septic.
Thank you.
For the F eight. Yep.
Anyone else here in the room? Comments? David, anyone online?
I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time, sir.
Commission comments? Kenny?
Pass it to the state.
Eric, um, yeah, I guess just a couple of quick things. Um, Attorney Marcus mentioned, um, a comment, I think from Ms. Vassil about suitability of the soils on the site. Is, is that, uh, subjective to this particular project? Or is that just a general comment about site suitability for any septic? Is it, I guess my question is, is it as this project is designed or is it just a general statement?
Based on soil tests. So it's any septic system. If we were to put a single family house.
Gotcha. Okay. Ms. Vassil, you wanted to.
I, I, I wanted to say that site suitability includes the soil conditions. And the plans that demonstrate code compliance. So, there are soils that can be used, and that point hasn't been argued. The thing that's ignored since our comments to you in November twenty six, twenty four. Was that no modifications were made to minimum basic public health, uh, septic system design criteria. For me to accept it. I would have loved to have had those what are considered very minimal. Modifications made that are really critical. Um, maybe a licensed installer doesn't think it has to be on ground contours. But you could talk with the two other professional engineers that are with me tonight, Todd Ritchie or, uh, Chris. About how basic this is and for dispersal of effluent without any, um, concern. So, the issue was that the plans required some modifications as noted to you in. In November that weren't made. And then I had to call it out again to say that. You, they didn't make the adjustments that would take, provide a plan that I could tell you demonstrates that the site is suitable. For the proposed design. So, it, it's, I don't know why. There's been no professional collaboration. I will tell you that, uh, planning, public health. In planning and safety have been involved in our country since nineteen twenty six. You have information on that. Your own records show, uh, public health and planning over way before my time in our town. And, um, the, the basic elements, if addressed, we would have loved to been able to sign this off. In relation to someone else's question, the, it was more about the basic principles of design. That has blocked the ability of the Health Department to say that it was demonstrating code compliance. Had the, um, row two been adjusted and some of the criteria. A minor in my, in our public health engineering world, minor adjustments, but so critically important. Uh, the proper distance above restrictive soils for adequate absorption. And the curtain drain lowering water two feet below, this plan would be acceptable. For some reason, we could not obtain the professional collaboration to get that done. And we are very, very disappointed that we couldn't.
Thank you, Mrs. Hille. Jeff, any comments? Sorry, Eric, continue.
Sorry. Um, question, I think for Attorney Marcus and Attorney Andrews. Just, just so I understand it, uh, I just want to know if there's precedent for this, uh, approval contingent upon. Septic suitability, right? Like, is there, is there precedent for a commission issuing some sort of approval like that? Or is that something, would, that would be new territory? I, I just kind of want to understand procedurally, but.
I'll have Chuck comment too, but essentially, every permit you give is conditioned upon that. Bring in a single family, a, a, a one acre subdivision. And you come in and basically you approve the lots. Well, all you're doing is saying that, you know, that if you're soil testing, that they will sustain the, the septic system. That's the suitability. But your approval of a subdivision lot is contingent upon. The ability to get a septic system approved when the building purpose is fulfilled. Same thing here. I'm just saying, you know, we, it, it, it's really no different. Whether there's enough motivation to stay, I go a step further. Go to the state and ask them if you have any question about suitability. Ask the state. Are these soils suitable? You've got reports for Health Department saying one thing. We've got reports from engineers saying another thing. That's not suggesting, it's a reasonable condition of approval. The interesting thing is, and Chuck and I can discuss that too. You can approve this on condition, or we can settle the appeal. We can always do this as a settlement of an administrative appeal. We have an eight dash thirty G appeal pending. You can do it without your time constraints that David had pointed out. You can close a public hearing and make your determination. You could actually make a condition of your approval that, uh, that, uh, that Laura Vassil's recommendation be the plan. I mean, we have to, basically, she's just said what, what she thinks her recommendations are. That that be, that be incorporated into the plans. They have a lot of working, a lot of work area to, to run it. But the other thing is to say ultimately, we can settle off appeal. And that, in this element of appeal, you can have any reasonable stipulation. It can be done easily.
And, and yeah, last thing, so that, that feel that kind of working, oh, checking the spaces.
Mr. Kishman, do you, I, I'm happy, do you want, I think your question was, is there a precedent if we approved it? Proved it with the condition that you get health, uh, health approval, either, you know. That, that the septic sign off or an extension of the, of the sewer system. And can you do that? Does that create, uh, uh, an incorrect, uh, or a bad precedent? Was, was that the question or?
Yeah, if, if, if that's something that, that's happened before, if there's, if there's any precedent for kind of going that path as opposed to something that feels more traditional.
Sure, I, I would distinguish between subdivisions and site plans. In some ways, in some ways, when you, when you approve a subdivision, you're, you're sort of making a, a representation that, yeah, you can build something on the law. I mean, that, uh, you, you're actually doing something. You're creating new lots and frankly. Uh, that's why I think you want all your work done in, ahead of time to make sure that there are soil suitabilities there, that you can put a house there. And if you, and if you just made them conditional, you could sell a lot and it was, what, I can't put a house there? A site plans and, 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 and just dwellings and other projects are a little bit different, I think. Um, just because I, I agree that you, any, uh, you know. Any project can be subject to conditions, one of which can be health condition of control, uh, approval. Um, the, the, the thing here is that we're also dealing with eight thirty G. And I, you know, you've heard a lot about that tonight, but one of the, one of the elements of eight thirty G is that. If there is a serious public health and safety issue, which I think everyone agrees is subject disposal, sewage disposal is a serious public health and safety issue. That's implicated by the application. Can you address it by reasonable condition? And, and if you can, that's the way you should do it. So, so in the class of eight thirty G cases. The, the statute sort of directs you to go that way. Uh, I know Mr. Marcus is familiar with a case where it was litigated out of North Haven, where there was actually a larger, a larger project. That it was, uh, zoning commission had denied it because it had to get WPCA approval and that didn't appear to be likely. And the, it went up to the appellate court and, and, and the appellate court said, no, you should have approved it. Made that a condition of approval, went up to the Supremes and it never decided, but, but that's. So I, I would agree that that is something that it could be done. And again. I, and I, I thought that Laura's comments were very, very clarifying as well. I, I think what Laura is essentially saying is that, that, they, they disagree, and I'd love to hear from Chris. Because he's, so it's just Laura, it's Chris. Uh, about whether this, she says they haven't tried to comply with the health code, and, and, and that's her job. And Mr. Trinkus is saying, yes, I think it does. And, uh, and, and that's what they're disagreeing. And I think what Laura was clarifying is that until they show a code complying plan. That they, you know, you, you can't say that it's suitable. You got to show it to me. So I think that, but, but I think she's indicated, yeah, that there are differences between this, the first application and the second application. The first application, there, there was, I think, as Mr. Trinkus mentioned, that, you know, remember there are two buildings, you had to have two. A lot of primary and reserve area was a whole different location. The soils weren't as good. It was close to wetlands. There was a bunch of other stuff. And they moved it up to the, where there's better soils. And I, I understood Ms. Vassil to say. Yeah, if you address these things, I think you could do it, but you, and they're very critical and you haven't addressed them. So I think that's sort of the distinction I'm getting between this one and this, the, the, the first application where we didn't even get the, I don't even know, this could be. You, you know, this is a tight site and you've got, want to put six units, whether you can do it at all. And with the redesign, I, I understand Ms. Vassil saying, yeah, if you address all these things, we think it could be done. So, I, I guess I'm saying that I'm ultimately, I think, uh, okay with the, if the commission were to go that way. To agree with, with the condition as suggested by Mr. Marcus. And again, if they can't work it out and she denies the application, they could go to the state and, and, and they could say, uh. You know, the, the state can decide who, if, who's right. Rather than the Planning Zoning Commission and the Superior Court Judge. I, I, I understand Mr. Marcus's point on that.
Thank you, Attorney Andrews. Jeff, any comments?
Yeah, um, for, uh, Trinkus. The, the request for Mr. Vassil, things that you don't want to do because you think your design is accurate. Or, or there, you can't do them because of, um, restraints on the property, where you have your parking lots, your buildings and all that stuff.
Actually, Steve Trinkus, for the record, uh, one of her statements is that. The curtain drain must lower the groundwater two feet below the bottom of the system. And she cites page forty eight of the code, which is attached to her memo. So I would suggest you look at it. It shows a picture of soil with a hardpan layer where the groundwater is perched on top of the hardpan. That's what happens. The curtain drain is notched two feet into the hardpan. The curtain drain on my plan on all the cross sections is notched at least two feet into the hardpan, thus meeting the code requirement. The detail by the state also shows eighteen inches from the bottom of a leaching trench to the hardpan. We have between eighteen and a half and twenty one inches to the hardpan. So we exceed the minimum code requirements. You cannot lower the groundwater below the leaching system in hardpan. Because the hardpan has no water in it. The hot water sits on top of the hardpan. So a curtain drain is designed to intercept the hardpan layer. So the water coming from uphill hits a drain, drops into the drain, follows the stone in the pipe and goes away. Thus, it does not continue running under the system. That's what detail on page forty eight shows. So, the design conforms to that requirement. That's exactly what I did. I measured it more than once. Um, the other aspect, and she cites.
Her design, her recommendation for the design is also compliant?
No, she is saying, she is misinterpreting that section of the code. The code says the curtain drain goes in two feet into the hardpan. You cannot lower the groundwater table in hardpan because there is none. The groundwater is on top of the hardpan. So a curtain drain is designed to intercept it and bring it around the system. The old code actually only required the drain to be notched six to twelve inches into it at some point. Maybe in the past ten years, they made it two foot. Uh, the other issue is, uh, and again, she provides a sketch in there showing what they call convergent and divergent system. A divergent system would be a ridge line where the ridge goes this way and the contours actually spread out as you go downhill. The convergent system is basically a valley where you have hills on either side and everything comes to the center. She is claiming that there is a convergent situation here. In my memo, which was submitted, uh, the end of last week or over the weekend. I drew lines from the four, the four ends of the primary leaching system. The lines do not converge. They go in two separate directions. The middle two are close, but they're parallel at a certain point. And then as you go farther downhill, they continue splitting apart. This is nowhere close to being a convergent system. Again, it is a misreading of the code. And I am no, I know the State Health Department will support my position on both of those issues. Because I'm clearly in compliance with the technical standards. That's what we have to design to.
Thank you. Yeah, I have one more item. It's not related to the septic. On the existing conditions plan, the adjoining to the south, it looks like they have a driveway on your property?
Yeah, there's an encroachment.
Being, well, I see the, the garage is really close too, so they must need that to get into the garage. Is that?
Is there a question? Do you have a question more?
Possession and there could be issues, property line moves. So what's your plan for the?
I said this previously over the last, I don't know, this is fifteen months that we've been sitting here. That I don't plan on doing anything with it and I'm letting them keep in their stuff, their arbivotes, their driveways, their trees. The garage, all on my property.
Their like license agreement or something?
It's just an encroachment that's on it. Um, now I'm pretty existing and it will be on the ad build when it's finished.
But Jeff, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that if we need to work out a license agreement. I'm not, I, I think it could be done, but the answer is we're not disturbing the neighborhood.
If anything, I'm actually in need of a buffer between us.
Any other questions, Jeff?
No.
I think his questions, I, you know. When, if what I was going to say as far as, was there anything that you could do? Sitting down with the Health Department right now to work this out. And it sounds like there isn't.
Stephen Trinkus, for the record, that's correct. I went through all the information Laura submitted. I made sure the curtain drain on the downhill side was two feet below the hardpan layer. It's actually. Depending on the slope, maybe, you know, twenty seven, twenty eight inches on the uphill side. That's what the code says. It's two feet. And that's what we provided. And the convergent issue is a misinterpretation of the code. The site does not converge. Actually, years ago, in the late eighties and early nineties, the state health, the local health departments. We would design septics across a valley like that where you had the two ends of the system on slope. And in the center you overfilled. And that was actually permitted by the State Health Department. So they changed at some point, is this is, this is not a convergent system. And there's nothing I can do to.
Is there a way that you would be able to sit down and come to a compromise on it? Is my question.
I, I thought my sketch, which clearly showed the flow paths, would end the discussion.
Okay, but the back and forth with these pimpers has been happening for a year and a half with both things. So I just, I wanted to ask whether you and Laura and the two engineers could, could work it out.
As Attorney Marcus alluded to, he was okay with a conditional approval, uh, using Laura's basis of design recommendations. Um, so at some point they would have to do that.
Right, now, is it feasible, is the question?
Collaboration and design recommendations from the Health Department. The Health Department, under the health code, the engineer does a soil testing. The engineer does a design and all the calculations in conformance with the code. The Health Department's job in this mix is to review a plan for compliance with the same technical standards that I'm designing to. There is no collaboration. There is no consensus. It is, I design to the code, they review to the code. That's the way it has been. And I have practiced septics, I've done septics on my own since eighty eight, and I did it for four years before that. So, I've got more than enough experience. I've also, as I said previously, over three thousand systems in the state, not one failure. And I put that to the record, but it is years ago, this predates. And I put that to the record, but it is years ago, this predates, you people in New Fairfield years ago, a sanitary named Paul Lockwood helped res, helped installers design septic systems in ball con, who wanted to convert cottages to houses. And Paul basically told these installers what to draw up, and then he approved them. And what happened was those systems got put in and they failed. So if the health department reviews what the engineers provide. I wasn't going to cite a seminar that I went to way back in eighty-eight that Frank Schaub and the state health department put on in Meriden. It was a couple of months after I actually got my physical license. And Frank Schaub, who was the head of the state department, Matt Pollack, is now in that position. Frank Schaub said to the collective installers and engineers, the code is a minimum. The engineers are the experts. And you, if you have to go beyond the code, that's your prerogative and right to do so. So the engineers are the experts. The health department is the regulatory side to make sure my design conforms to the technical standards. And in this design, it is sized for six one-bedroom units under the multifamily criteria. It provides more than the required separation to seasonal groundwater. Ledge is not an issue. And it meets all the criteria. That's, that's all I can do.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Leggner, any further questions?
Uh, yeah, Steve, uh, why, if, if you're so sure that the state will back you up on this, why haven't you gone to the state and gotten something back from the state to say, this is the direction we're going in? Why can't you get the state to approve it?
Bob, I'll be happy to answer that. Before we did the septic testing in this portion, portion of the site in September of twenty-four, I reached out by email to Matt Pollack. We wanted Matt to come down to look at the test holes while I was there and while Laura was there and possibly our soil scientist. Matt Pollack told me in an email that he would not come down at my request, that the town had to make a request. I know Mr. Drayford talked to Mr. Carter and the health department and wanted them to ask Matt to come down. I don't think that request was ever made of Mr. Pollack. But I reached out in the beginning and he said I, he could not come out at my request. That's where we are.
Bob, the system doesn't really work like that. The state health department anticipates that the professionals in the health department and engineers and others will work together. I'm not sure why, um, Matt said what he said. I wasn't part of any of those conversations. Nor did I block it. It's just professional that local systems and local professionals work together to address, uh, these matters. I don't know why though, that they would offer to meet what Matt yet choose to do work without me. And so there's been this very confusing uh, behavior and action, and it doesn't matter. Now we're moving forward, I hope. But, um, you're right, normally professionals, they, uh, speak with each other and they collaborate, they meet and they work out the elements of design and, um, planning. And that's just what it is. Um, if people aren't aware of, uh, again, public health in planning, that's obviously been going on for a very long time. And there's a whole packet that we could give you that talks to that.
Thank you, Laura.
Um, I guess before I kind of wrap this up real quick, um, kind of agree with Attorney Andrews. I know we talked about subdivisions where site plan, in my opinion, watching all these most of the time. If a site plan approval, we have a full design. And I understand that even though you have your opinion and the health department has their opinion on it, so we're not coming to a head there. Um, I, I would, I would ask, back to Attorney Andrews, his opinion, um, I don't think there's any further testimony we can get. We're just going to be doing this back and forth, um, for no reason, um, that we would, if, if he would agree, or David, if you would agree that we would close the, the public hearing.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, i- if I could, I did have a, because whatever the commission decides, you have the burden of proof in the event of an appeal. So I did have a couple of additional questions. Uh, one that, that I just wanted to get some information on the record. First, we do have an engineer, Mr. Poliski. Um, I, I, I know you, you haven't commented this evening. Is there any comments you wanted to make? Uh, with respect to this recent plan?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For the record, my name is Chris Polowski. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Office of Civil One here on behalf of the Bethel Health Department. And thank you, Chuck, for asking. Um, I just a couple of quick comments here. Number one, I'm, I'm trying to keep this brief. I agree, this is not a subdivision. We are not just proving su- uh, soil suitability. There, the applicant has to submit a plan that meets the technical standards and not just proves soil suitability. I think that's already been discussed. Just want to make that clear. Uh, it's also, uh, the opinion of this office that the technical standards have not been met with the plan design and therefore Laura Vaseel cannot approve the plan. Uh, some of the reasons, and I'll list a few of them, but, uh, we'll reserve further comment. I will issue a letter in the coming days. Um, as we did just receive these, the response from, uh, the applicant's engineer. But, uh, the main points I want to make are the proposed septic system does not meet the minimum leaching system spread. It does not meet the minimum eighteen inch separation to groundwater to the bottom of the leaching system. And it does not follow along the ground contours. Again, there are, these are only a few of the reasons. Um, that does not meet technical standards and we will reserve judgment and put in, uh, a detailed letter for the record to review. But again, I just really wanted quickly again on that soil suitability issue. That's for subdivisions. This is a site plan. It needs a fully designed code-compliant system that meets the technical standards. Those protect life, health and safety. So therefore, if the plan does not meet technical standards, Laura Vaseel cannot approve it and life, health and safety are not protected. So I'd like to make that on the record. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poliski. The other question I had was, uh, for Mr. Ritchie. Um, uh, Mr. Ritchie, are you, uh, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, um, I had a question. Um, we, we heard, uh, Mr. uh, Trinkhouse indicated that he responded and changed the plan in response to some of your comments. But I know you did have sixteen uh, comments. And I guess the questions are, uh, under eight thirty G, we have to show that, uh, any reason for denial or conditional approval is based on substantial public interest in health and safety, uh, that can't be addressed by conditions. So what I, I guess my question, uh, is, I, I don't know if you can do it for, because you had sixteen comments, some of which were addressed or some, some were not. If you could tell us whether your, all of your comments have been addressed and those that have not been addressed, do you consider, uh, are the issues serious public health and safety issues? And if they are, can they be addressed by reasonable conditions?
Sure, uh, for the record, Todd Ritchie, professional civil engineer, uh, also board certified environmental engineer, registered environmental health specialist and registered sanitarian. Um, based on what Chuck was mentioning, uh, about our latest, uh, review letter for this, uh, application, um, we did have a variety of comments. Um, many of them were addressed by the applicant's engineer. Um, uh, some of them were, um, discussed in the letter, but not necessarily fully addressed. Um, as far as, uh, the, the significance of the comments, um, I think, Mr. Andrews, uh, I can speak to, uh, a couple of them that could be potential, um, conditions of approval. Um, one of them being that there's been some back and forth about whether or not there's an existing asphalt curb along the eastern side of Putnam Park Road and from the property on the property side. Um, I, in my opinion, there isn't a, a suitable curb there if it, if there's any, uh, remaining at all. Um, and the drainage from the roadway certainly, um, does come onto the property. So for the sake of protecting, um, the property and keeping excess drainage from the roadway off the property and also of course, um, um, protecting the septic system, which is close to the road, I would recommend that a condition of approval be that, um, the, uh, an asphalt curb be installed along the full frontage of the property along Putnam Park Road. Um, another, another recommended condition of approval, as I've brought up in the previous uh, site plan and this one as well. And it appears on this, uh, site plan, there's really no justification for it is, uh, the excessive slopes, uh, of the two to one, two-foot horizontal to the fo- one-foot vertical slopes uh, that are to the eastern portion of the property, basically right off the paved areas. Um, that's a tr- transition area that, I, I don't know if you know what a two-foot horizontal to a one-foot vertical slope, but it's basically a staircase. That's why we have steps to get up those slopes because they're very steep. Um, so that's the same slope as, as a staircase. So I, I would say that for the sake of, it's also, um, not recommended to be, uh, steeper than three-foot horizontal to one foot vertical for a couple of reasons. One is to keep it um, um, uh, manageable for, uh, mowing and maintenance without any hazards. If there's some sort of, uh, ride-on mower or something that you've certainly heard of issues where those have flipped over on steep slopes. Um, they usually want to keep those slopes, um, as, as flat as possible. And, and the other issue is also just for walking up and down the slopes. I'm sure that these residents are going to want to, um, make use of that, um, rear area of the property for recreation. Uh, so trans- transitioning between those two areas with a, with a steep section that's not really necessary would probably, uh, not be ideal. So I would recommend that a, uh, maximum of a three-foot horizontal to one-foot vertical slope um, be, um, required there. It also minimizes the potential for erosion. Uh, because, uh, two-to-one slopes, uh, are susceptible to erosion. Um, as far as, uh, drainage, I think the, uh, on the the north side, north side of, uh, the building that has units four, five and six, the latest plan showed a pipe discharge on the backside of that building with the grade still, uh, the proposed grade still, um, um, directed towards the building. I would recommend if there's going to be a, sort of piping of that swell around the buildings, that that, uh, pipe discharge be extended to basically the location or close to the location of the, uh, proposed footing drain outlet so that there's no issue of any discharge of concentrated flow being, um, potentially directed towards, um, the building. Um, I would say, uh, the grading over, over the septic system area particularly is not adequate. Um, the row number two, the end of the system is actually sticking out of the ground right now. So that's not in compliance with the health code. So I'm just speaking from a rating standpoint. Um, and so that's something that has to be addressed as part of the, uh, the septic, the septic, uh, revisions, if that's what's going to occur. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I, I think most of the other things were, were taken care of. So those are the things that come to mind. Um, and ultimately DOT, uh, will be, uh, reviewing and permitting this project as well because Put- Putnam Mark Road is Route fifty-eight. Um, so the issue of whether, uh, a driveway needs to join the roadway at a ninety-degree angle will be the final decision will be made by DOT. They require that and there will be revisions that will be necessary for this plan. Um, they also will be the ones to, um, certify and accept, uh, sightlines and stu- uh, required sightlines and, and that sort of thing. Um, I think, well, I, I would just say previously I recommended that a, uh, stop bar and stop sign be, uh, installed on this property. Uh, multifamily residential property. And I was, that, that recommendation was rejected. But I will note, we did have a public hearing earlier tonight on one oh five Milwaukee where that recommendation was made and, um, accepted. So I would probably also state that, you know, in this case, uh, a stop bar and a stop sign may be warranted. And, uh, I would, I would, um, s- suggest that the, uh, public safety official for the town of Bethel review that and make the final decision. Um, lastly, uh, I just want to mention, sorry, um, is that I, I don't think the issue of sight lighting was ever, um, discussed. Uh, um, and that was something that we've brought up in the past. Um, I don't see any light pole locations. I don't see a photometric plan. I don't see light locations called out on, on the building. Um, so adequate lighting is, is certainly necessary um, for, without light spillage, of course, over the property line is necessary for, uh, safety of the residents, uh, and their, uh, mobility across the site under all, all weather conditions. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
Hey, uh, can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Uh, Steve, those listen, those, uh, issues of compatibility he was mentioning, they seem pretty reasonable. Is, are you saying the same thing?
I mean, we have no, Steve Trunkus, for the record, I have no objection to extending that drain pipe past the unit. That's fine.
Just in general.
Generally, those are reasonable conditions.
The slopes are not going to get changed. There is no issue with two-to-one slopes. We
we can, we can.
We've done two-to-one slopes since the seventies and they're fine. They're mowable.
I'm saying to move it along maybe a little.
Yes. More than three-to-one slope does requires more fill, more earth disturbance, more clearing.
I know. I'm just, just saying.
The answer was, they're reasonable conditions. It could be considerable.
That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. David, I'll, I'll leave it to you real quick on your opinion here of the.
Well, the, the, the two, two of the remarks that, that, uh, I've made during my initial comments, uh, the first of which that, does the commission want to consider, um, discussing, uh, this application? Um, should they close the public hearing tonight, which i- it seems that that's the way it will go uh, during their special, uh, meeting on January twenty-third? I, I, I think you should pull the board if, if, if that, if, um, the commission would be amenable to that, Mr. Chairman.
We, we took a quick poll. If you guys would be okay with have, adding uh, an additional meeting ahead of our special meeting on January twenty-third?
Yeah.
You mean it's-
Isn't it an addition? I think it's-
Adding it to the agenda, not a-
Yes. You're okay? Yes, yes. Okay, yes, we'd be okay with that. And for that reason, I think we would-
And, and you'll also, you'll also want to confirm that, that your experts would be available for that meeting.
Would you guys be able to, Todd, uh, Chris, Attorney Andrews, would you be available on January twenty-third?
Yes. I'm available.
I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as well. Thank you.
So, so staff would recommend that you, you already have the mobility's, uh, studies scheduled to start at, uh, the discussion for that to start at seven o'clock. Um, to, in the interest of time, i- it may, uh, it may be best to have this discussion beforehand. So six o'clock, six-thirty, what, what time would you have in mind to, to start that meeting?
All right, six-thirty works better for me. Diane's saying six.
I'm just wondering how much time that you're-
I, I think we- Yeah.
I hate to do this, guys. Please note that, uh, we're dealing with an administrative aspect of, of meeting that you're going to be-
Understood.
Okay. And that's the only reason I'm inserting myself into this discussion. Six-thirty is the best time to start uh, your deliberations regards to the application. I would strongly recommend six-thirty.
Then we're, we're going to do six-thirty added to our agenda for our special meeting on January twenty-third.
When we're talking about closing the meeting now tonight?
I am about to do that, Mr. Leggner.
Okay, Chuck, do we have everything we need from you?
Yes, I think you're all set. You can close the public hearing. We can discuss this on six-thirty on the twenty-third.
Thank you. We are now going to close the public hearing. Does that require, that does require a vote, right? Let's just close it.
Yes, you need to close.
Motion, motion of vote.
Can I make a mo- someone make a motion to close it here?
Uh, motion to close the hearing for nine.
All in favor? All opposed? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. You're right. Mr. Marcus, it's got to be, it's my first time here in the, in the big chair. I gotta, you know, ask those questions.
You're doing okay. You got two words. You got one in front of you and one looking-
Yeah, I know. Wait for the bill.
Todd, Chris, Laura and, uh, Chuck, thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night, good night.
Good night.
No, well, we've got a correspondence. Yeah, so I'm going to just say it. All right, Beth and Doug are back in. Uh, we're going to move on to the essentials. I apologize. I see um uh twenty-seven White Road. We we did actually already. Accept your new business uh for for our meeting on. February eleventh uh twenty twenty-five. So if you want to jump off, you certainly can. Uh but you.
Call our office in the morning.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Sorry for the wait, Eric.
Okay, no problem. Thanks, Dave.
You. Moving on to correspondence, uh we have uh for fifty-three Taylor Ave. It's an eight twenty-four referral from the Board of Selectmen to expand utilities.
Anybody handle this or do you want me to?
Yeah. And Eric, Eric uh Bradwick for accusing himself of this discussion.
Okay.
Because I, I I'm fired. Who wants paper? Other people want paper.
I got fired if you keep going. I have a fire to keep going tonight.
Okay, so what you have in front of you is a referral from the. Uh Board of Selectmen regarding uh property located at fifty-three Taylor Avenue. Um it is a referral that's required under the uh sewer ordinance that anytime you do an expansion. Or looking at an application for expansion of sewer line, that there is a referral that's made to the. Planning and zoning commission requirement. Um what I need, what I, the documentation that you have specifically showing you that. This property is located within sewer district. So therefore. Um it's a quirk in the ordinance where it says it has to go to the commission. Knowing that, knowing that there is an application that's coming before you very shortly in public hearing format. Um. The reason why this is being. Asked of for the Public Utilities Commission, it's requirement for them to uh review this and say, yes, it can be. Before you go further with the application. Uh in regards to this, there's one thing that you should know. Um the sewer line was extended to forty-nine Taylor Avenue. Um for in order for another project to be developed. And this is an extension of that line. When the town does extensions of lines, it is not the town, town grant safe station. The developer has to do the extension themselves. In regards to them doing an extension of the line, if there are other properties that are um located within that area. Provisions have to be made on the line, and I can't remember what the term is. My husband would say to allow for a connection. For them to connect to the line if they so decide.
This is the service.
Somebody show me.
Yes, it is.
You said it's up.
It's not me, it's the Board of Selectmen.
It's up to forty-nine.
Sewer plan. Yes, it's up to forty-nine. It doesn't go up around the corner.
So the, it's right. Before the hairpin turn.
Yes, correct. Do you want to respond to that?
Aren't you public now?
This is a referral from the.
Board of Selectmen on behalf of the Public Utilities Commission.
That they're okay with extending.
They're not saying they're okay. They're saying you're one of the.
We're the first step, just like when the town wants to buy property, we're the first.
You have to give a report to the Board of Selectmen. Now.
What's the staff?
What do we say? We, we're just getting the information. We're not voting on it or anything, right?
You don't have to vote on it this evening if you don't want to. I don't think Public Utilities has a meaning to the middle of the work. Have to review it, absolutely.
We approve it at night. This, this.
You you issue a report back to the fir- it's called, you're going to be issuing a report back to the fir- to the Board of Selectmen.
Uh-huh.
It's not a decision. It's a report.
Yeah.
Then they take it under your advisement and they decide, okay, we agree with your report or no, we don't agree. They could choose to ignore.
It's a formality, right?
Yes. So if you want to table this and then take some time and look at it in. For the next meeting, it's up to you all. We do have time on this.
We do have time.
It's the first time you're doing it. If you want to take some time.
We have questions. So can you have any questions?
I have no questions.
You just asked some questions.
You want to look, you said you want to look at it. You want to take time and look at it.
Um.
That's fine.
Let me ask a question. If by. Granting, that's what, you know, I'm not using the wrong terminology. Are we then allowing this? Are we now um. Opening ourselves up to the project differently? Like, are we saying, well, you let us put the septic, the sewer in there. So now you have to kind of approve our plan.
My answer would be no. Either way, whatever, what, however you decide. Okay, you say, no, I know this plan is coming. I know this site plan is coming. I'm gonna say no. Court case has shown that in the regard, in regards, right, to even say it, in regards to affordable housing and eight thirty G. That you cannot use a denial based on sewer water. In regards to this, because it is located in the sewer district. If it was outside of the sewer district, that would be different. That would be different. If it's outside the sewer district, yes, it would have, your 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 report would have some weight. In this instance, it really doesn't.
Okay.
Beth, is it a sewer line, is a sewer line up on National Road too?
Yes, there is. And it comes down Good Hill a little bit, I think. Or the water line does. The wat- it it's, it's a very convoluted area of town. Excuse me, I'm. But it comes down. It co- it goes up Good Hill. We have water, uh we have, we have sewer up in Good Hill. We don't have water. That's all well.
Good Hill.
Easement through other properties, Jeff. My nerves are better.
Yes, easement through other properties. Oh, there's lots of easements through other properties up there. For the sewer line and also for the water line. Water line comes in on Nashville. And there's a easement that goes through Nashville over to Taylor Ave. On the upper course.
On the upper course.
Yes. Any other questions?
I was just wondering who, what made the request, but now in reading this, it looks like it was Steve Trinkowski.
See, the only engineer in town.
No. It's the only engineer that does eight thirty Gs.
So he's asking for that, right?
In Bethel.
Doug, any questions?
Seems like it's elementary.
Yep, school.
There are no questions.
I like to read it. I like.
Okay, so.
So let's, let's table this then to our next meeting on, uh was it twenty-eight? Two twenty-four, one twenty-eight, twenty-four.
That requires a motion of vote, right?
Make a motion to, we have to extend it?
Yes.
Yeah, make a motion to, to table the item to our one twenty-eight, twenty-five meeting. All in favor? Opposed?
The last item.
Are we on work session?
No, you're not.
Okay.
Next is the affordable, uh is, I'm recusing my, recute in court slot.
Oh, I saw, sorry, you snuck it up.
I'm sorry, I'm getting. So cranky.
Yeah, we're all.
Okay, uh the next item on the agenda is, I, please note for the record that I'm accusing myself as the, where I am. Employed by the town of Bethel and I'm putting my hat on as the chairman of the Bethel Housing. We'll just take, take one person down and stuff.
Do you want me to read it?
Um, I'll read it into the record, though. That's one of the reasons why. So, uh, First Selectman Carter is here this evening. Um. The town of Bethel has an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that has been administered by the Planning and Zoning Commission since its inception. To date, the fund has been used to pay for costs associated with sales of units at Lexington Meadows, most of which are known manager. The rightful properties for the housing authority has been the town administrator for the last ten years. There are many statutory requirements associated with these sales, legal publications, availability. Determination of sale price and certification of documentation qualifications pertaining to the potential buyer. Uh I just want to make sure you can hear me. That's why we're reading the letter. Bethel Housing Authority would like to request a sum not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for site engineering to be done on the old police station site. To determine if the property can be feasibly support construction of elderly affordable units. By doing the engineering review of the property, this will aid the town in meeting the needs of our elderly. And or determine that the property is not feasible for development and another year should be considered. Bethel Housing will be working with SLR Consultants, the town of Bethel's consulting engineer. Over the next six months and will keep the town and commission informed of their progress. Bethel Housing Authority is excited to pursue the potential housing opportunities, especially with a waitlist of a hundred and fifty elderly, elderly. And only eighty units available at Reynolds Ridge, sincerely about the package.
Fifty thousand dollars for feasibility study?
Yes, up to. Okay, what we're, I, we, we have.
That's nothing for you. We could do any feasibility.
I say, I call it a, I call it a feasibility study. But because it's not a feasibility study, they're going to be do the, doing engineering associated with the site. There's uh flood, flood zone, flood plains. They're, they're going to start with looking at it. As is it feasible for them to do the engineering associated with the project? It's very tricky, very, very tricky. Um it it consists of, for example, it consists of over um thirty acres. The lime kill.
That would be in the wetlands.
Oh, there's tons of wetlands in the back, but surveying wise, we're not going to have them go out there and survey the thirty.
Right.
We're gonna have to go out there and survey. There, that's where fifty grand would be right there. Um we're gonna have them go out to the uh the site itself. There's going to be some mitigation that's going to have to be involved. As far as um stormwater management, drainage, there'd be some fill activity. That will have to happen, so we have to mitigate that out in the wetlands by.
Wetlands improvements and stuff like that.
We're gonna have to deal with FEMA, the state, things of that nature. We're just, we're looking at from the point of view of. They're gonna, they're gonna design it if it's designable. If they can't design it, it stops. That's why I said up to fifty thousand.
So when you say you'll keep us uh.
I'll let you know.
Up to date. All right.
Now, the re-.
This is our findings and we spent ten thousand dollars.
How much do we have in there? How much do we have in the fund?
Uh, close to.
I checked it. I don't remember.
I checked it. It's ten o'clock and I forgot to do. We have at least six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Now, it sounds, sounds like a lot of money. Um. Let me, let me just finish and then I can talk to you about that for a second. And again, is is here, which is great, and I'm, I'm so sorry that we're so late. One thing you have to keep in mind too, anytime you're dealing with housing, State of Connecticut, Department of Housing, funding through the state of Connecticut. You have, my opinion is you have to look at it this way. We've had this piece of property. People rumor, oh, you can't build, you can't. Yes, you can. No, you can't. By using your funds helping us, the town will be able to determine. Is it feasible to build up or do we use it for a ball field or what can we use the property for? It also would be considered part of the contribution that the town has to make. In order to receive funding for building, funding for design, things of that nature. So that would be a contribution of the town. So the town in the long run is going to win no matter what is done. That's my sales pitch as the Bethel.
So I, I understand that procedure, but I'm, I'm gonna go back to the, to the one time that where. We had authorized somebody to do some work. And there wasn't a contract and at the last minute, the whole thing fell through and we canceled it. Does it make sense if we have a concern with the fifty thousand dollars to create two phases?
Up to fifty thousand is what I'm saying.
No, I understand, but.
Okay.
Make it two phases, one not to exceed twenty-five and then come back to the commission for the rest of the money. Uh if there's a concern about the fifty, that's the the qualifier.
Okay.
I agree with you, but as long, I, I think we're gonna get regularly updated. I understand what you're saying, but.
It's a great question. It's a very good question. Um the answer is, uh, I'll just throw. Some state agencies at you. Um.
Don't, don't.
Only because we are so meticulous about our bookkeeping. Uh with the Department of Housing, with CHAFPA, with um HUD. Any money, we receive a lot of money, which we are so thankful for at this point. Uh you know, we're, we, we're getting four and a half bill to upgrade congregation housing over and over standard. You know, we just finished, you see the rehab of the Reynolds Ridge. We were very involved, intricate financing. Auditing and things of that nature. So naturally, what I was trying to do is do it the easiest way we can. Um and as far as what would, how the money, the accounts are done, we set up the account. It's strictly for SLR pertaining to this project. It's not using SLR's engineering fund.
So do we have?
I can give you a. No?
Obviously, my question is not valid. So here's my next question.
Okay.
Do you anticipate having a contract with the consultants that said, here's your scope of work and you have a not to exceed of X?
Yes.
Okay, so then we're covered.
Yeah.
Because with all the contracts, you will not exceed the fifty.
Correct. I do that all the time and I'm sorry I should have mentioned that too.
Can you put in like different phases of review?
No.
No.
No, it'll be over a six month period and I'm sure that it will take maybe two or three months at the most to find out if the, if we can go forward.
Because I, I thought at some point either this board or the board before we were all on it. Approved money to look at the feasibility for this and so.
They didn't.
I'm pretty sure it came up sometime.
Well, it came up in discussion that I would, we would be looking for funding, but we never came up. We never made a decision.
I thought we did, but.
Okay, no, the answer's no.
Um and then elderly housing, you're talking about like Reynolds Ridge.
Correct.
Because there's a lot of different types.
Right, that's the targeted population. As far as that work, I wouldn't know.
So Beth, I think what Spruul's saying is he he thinks by the time they spend twenty-five thousand or we spend twenty-five thousand. Feasibility study, we should know if it's going to go forward or backward.
You'll know because I'll be the first one to tell you. Because I'll be excited. And it's not, I will keep the board informed. Let's, let's put it that way. I will keep the board informed as we make progress.
Do you need a motion or consensus or?
For the money, yes.
I, I actually have a quick question too. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Please still be the chairman of the Bethel Housing Authority in March.
March of this year.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, because did you just reappoint me?
I don't, I don't think you're reporting that you're not going anywhere. Oh, sorry. Did that come out my head?
It is something that I am truly, truly looking forward to for the rest of my life. Uh I'm not moving. I'm not going anywhere.
I think this is a fantastic way to explore on behalf of the town and possibly have a great use if it, if it worked for this.
It works.
But if it doesn't, it's still money well spent to understand that site. And it's coming from a fund that's not pulling it out of the tax figures pockets anymore. Ever see it, but no one's gonna feel it.
The fund was designed.
I have to commend Dan on, on his cooperation on this. I really do. I, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I, I just kind of, you know, the one, the one thing I just kind of wanted to make clear too, um, this is a straight. This is a straight pass or to the affordable, how, excuse me, to the housing authority. And housing authority is its own entity, it has its own contract. So, okay, this, just to make sure, for the record, we have a fifty thousand dollar limit that we can spend without a bid. But we're just giving the housing authority money with a really good intention. Because, you know, that property, when I first came in here, uh that's why we tore the LPD down as fast as we did. We wanted to make sure that thing was cleaned out and there was an opportunity to look at affordable housing. It's the right place in town. Um hopefully, it can be built in a way that mitigates any kind of water drainage issues. Because a lot of people have been very confused. The uh, the back of that area was a flood plain, but it never had a flood per se. It had sewage issue once, I believe. Which every thought was a flood. Um but it's, it's a really, really great opportunity to use funds that are set aside. For affordable housing in a way that really benefits our community. So.
So just for historical purposes, I want to remind everybody. That Draper stood here one of the numerous times that he did on his nine Putnam. Road application and stated categorically that he had tried to purchase this property. Road application, and stated categorically that he had tried to purchase this property that we're talking about.
In regards to that, I will answer that, um, the Town of Bethel, myself, and Richard Straighton had looked at this prior to him coming to that conclusion.
Just giving everybody.
Or making a statement, we know what we're in for.
Um, I, I'll be honest, I've had a number of people informally say, hey, what can we do with that, you know, to sell it, I've had a lot of people informally ask about it. Uh, it's, it's been the position that we would try to do affordable housing, and that we would work with the Housing Authority, we're getting smart plan for us, instead of just, you know, selling it over to a developer for a dollar, any deals. Uh, we thought the affordable happening, we should have first dibs at doing this, because it's what they do in town, and they did a very successful runs, we're in with Phineas, now with Congregate, um, I think it had a great track record, so, for me, money well spent.
And State of Connecticut is anxiously waiting to see if it works.
We have a waitlist of people, that.
And state, that's where they want to put all their money, so, we'll give them the opportunity if it works.
So.
Can I put this to a motion?
Yeah, please.
Right? I'd like to make a motion that we accept the request from the Bethel Housing Authority dated January eighth, twenty twenty five to provide up to fifty thousand dollars in funding for, uh, investigation of the old police station site. I'm pumped to hear it.
Second.
Two, it's a term of.
Well, I've entered the memo. Yeah, it was, it's cherry right into the record, so. Alright, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Are they closed? There are none, alright.
That's a great outcome of this meeting.
There we go.
Send the best.
One kernel, one jewel, and everything.
Work session, we have nothing, files report, nothing.
That was, um, done.
Commission comments?
Done.
Spruul?
No.
I'm all at the end.
Anyone, Eric, no? Jeff, comments?
Uh, this eight thirty G stuff is a headache.
Well, we are close, uh, as Beth said at the beginning, we've.
Oh, we can speak about that.
Yeah.
I should have brought it over, I got two volumes, so.
Keep it quick, quick, though.
Paper, two volumes of paper, tons of paper. Uh, we are waiting for, um, uh, town council to, uh, do the cover for it, and, uh, and as soon as it's done, it goes to the state.
What, moratorium?
The moratorium paperwork, it's a lot of crap, paperwork. Um, and, uh, this, it, it's reviewed by the state, they can take up to ninety days. It's, it's looked at by every land use attorney in the State of Connecticut that does affordable housing, but I've already spoken to them, they all know it's come.
Chris, question.
And, and what's the likelihood of it being granted?
I think the likelihood is one hundred percent.
Can I ask a question?
How long is it?
Is it?
Four years.
Ninety days, we have to wait until you, or do we, we keep accepting act?
That was my ending statement, was gonna be, we, we, whenever you receive an eight thirty G application from here on in, that's why I went into that ninth a little bit.
Yep.
Um, you state for the record, we know, we have a moratorium in the process of being reviewed by the State of Connecticut. When we go to court, that's the first thing a judge asks, you have a moratorium, you have it.
So.
But you have to accept anything that walks in the door.
Until you have it.
Until we receive notice from the State of Connecticut that it has been approved. Board has gotten out. That is why you're getting inundated with some eight thirty G applications, so it's imperative that we get this as soon as possible, and Dan has been working on making that happen. Cause he's the Ben.
Ben, the man.
How do we prevent?
You can.
A long, long drawn out. Can we, can we require an engineering firm to have to work with our engineers in order for us to accept their application in the future? No, we can just have this continually go on for?
I think you're seeing, without getting into specifics, I think you, you're seeing a direction of curtail by staff, that it's gonna be curtailed. Unfortunately, you may have long involved applications, but it's not gonna be happening in the future.
We have a suggestion right now for pre-app meeting?
Mandatory that you have pre-apps.
This is eight thirty G, that doesn't.
No, it, it, any application that comes through the door, i- i- if it's a site plan or a subdivision, they all require a pre-application meeting with land use staff.
Got it, but this eight thirty G, because it throws out regulations, does not part of them.
This app, you have two, two applications before you know, under review that were submitted in October, I believe, of this year. Um, they were not accepted by staff, because the pre-application did not took place. So we did have a pre-application with the attorney.
Which we heard about a little bit today.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Everybody else does pre-apps except for the, um, president, engineer.
And then, can I ask, I don't want to keep this meeting going, but someone, even, even Attorney Marcus mentioned something about a ten by twelve dumpster, we just make that, will we write a regulation?
Yes, you can.
I have one thing to add to that.
Well, I know, and I, go back to quick.
It's weird idea, maybe it doesn't have legs, but, um.
Rats do, though. I had to do it.
That's good, so. I, I feel like, uh, oftentimes, generally the consensus is when developers go through the eight thirty G route, they kind of circumvent the, the traditional system, right, the projects that might not otherwise get approved, they kind of use it as a path to make that happen, right, we know that. What if, uh, we had something in the regulations where, when that happens, they, they put their name on the project in a way that's visible for a hundred years, right, boom, Brudvig Meadows, right, in a visible way, so they own it, their family owns it, a hundred years up where everyone can see it, and that's part of that process.
But I think the problem with what you just said is that eight thirty G just throws out our regulations, so you could put that in there, but it doesn't, it like circumvents everything.
Is that gonna be the name of your bra?
I don't know, that's, that's the process, I just kept.
Brudvig Meadows.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, you know what I mean, so that there's some skin in the game, cause I feel like that, to me, from a speaking from a personal standpoint, like there's no ownership in it, and you just kind of get these things done, and, and you forget about your community, and, and that's a way to be remembered here.
He's gonna go easier, Kenny brought it up early, like.
I just.
He's just standing on principle for no reason, to no end.
You cannot speak to the outside in the public here, you're, you're done, you can do it in your work session.
Alright, listen, I'm, I'm hungry, alright.
The public input, anyone, David?
It's just the members of this board and staff that are on right now, the chairman.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to adjourn? All in favor? All opposed? Alright.
Are we off this, are you turned off now, David? Or do I have to do it?